All of the council members are present.
Okay, great. And Roxy, who's our city attorney, I have unmuted you, so if you'll just manage muting yourself. We do for a bit of the voting and council. The gentle embrace sure that's on the due term. So what we get since we're talking or council members that we recognize people, we do recognize you. Would you acknowledge your name? And if you come back to acknowledge your act, it cannot be important to be given to you from Alde's Sunset Valley. I believe Mr. of the Bartonview neighborhood. So that would be helpful to our council members. Council members, in case you haven't already, I the Open Gov, be able to view all the comments that have come. There's been a day comes in information that has come in. Still have any
Mayor, I couldn't understand you. The audio is very bad.
I see not.
Okay.
Thank you everyone.
And then the last note would just be for the for the webcam. Okay webcam, so for myself, they're off. For anybody who's on via phone, they're off. So if you have your camera turned on, please don't use that as an indicator to the public, because not all of us that are in on the meeting. Sylvia, are you able to hear me now? Hi Sylvia, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is that better? You had sent me a message that said it was not very clear. Is this better?
Completely, thank you.
Okay, let's see if this works. This is me, this is what I was having issues with a few minutes ago. Okay. We are now going to start the meeting. It is 6:10 PM calling to session, regular city council meeting for the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. And I'm going to get straight into business and council members. My goal tonight, since we do have a time certain at 7:00 PM, my goal would be for us to get through as much as possible in the hopes that we can give item number six and seven as much attention as needed this evening. So without further ado, let's start with citizen and public communication. Is there anybody who would like to speak this evening to an item that's not on the posted agenda? If so, please raise your hand. Jean Wilkins, did you want to speak to something that's not on tonight's agenda?
No, actually, it's on the agenda.
Okay, so then let's have you speak when we get to that item.
Thank you.
Okay, but good news, I you're the hand raising work.
Mayor Sylvia, may I speak?
Yes, did you, sorry, I for some reason couldn't hear you. Did you want to speak to something not on tonight's agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to ask in regard to the Open Gov. That I noticed and have noticed before that one can only agree with five statements. And I wondered if you could explain why that limitation is on Open Gov.
I don't have anything to do with that. And I think that you and I had spoken to that before. So I'll let Sylvia address that with you offline, since we can't be responsive to things brought up during citizen comments.
Okay, well, I look forward to hearing from Sylvia. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening to something that is not on tonight's agenda? And I'll give it just one more second, just in case people are having a hard time either figuring out how to raise your hand. And if you ever cannot figure out how to raise your hand, you can also submit in the chat. And if that happens, staff, if you'll please make sure to audio, let me know if for some reason I'm not keeping up. Okay, and so with that, I'm going to move us down to our next item, item number three, which are our reports, starting with the mayor's dashboard. And Sylvia, I don't know if you have the ability to pull that up. Thank you Sylvia. And so on this, my note to council members would be similar to what I've said in the last few meetings. Please pay attention to the agenda planning. We do have a full agenda for our next two meetings. And I would ask this evening, there's one item for Councilmember Gonzalez. If Sylvia, if you could move to the agenda planning that I believe is in Sylvia's admin report. And my question for Councilmember Gonzalez would be to let me know if the admin report is sufficient, or she's also wanting to sponsor on the next agenda. I didn't want to take it off without first asking you if the so it's there, it's highlighted item number 11. So when council members also, if you would just let me know after Sylvia get off of the 7/21.
Mayor, I believe we're losing your your sound in and out.
Oh, can you hear now?
Yes, but we we didn't hear all of that, what you said regarding
So council members, if you would look at the 7/21 agenda, and if you're sponsoring something, if you would please raise your hand if you know that your item is either going to go away, or if you know you're not going to have your backup prepared in time, or if you're willing to push it to a later date. And so what I'm going to anticipate is that we're not going to be able to get through all of those items on the 21st. I'm also anticipating that tonight's I'm also anticipating that tonight's item is potentially not go is going to have to come back for a second meeting. So council member Medicus and Gonzalez, do you have a clear path for item, the item that's on line 12? Item number 10, council member Medicus, council member Rosen Garden and Reitz for the item that's on line nine, are those all things that you all are confident you're going to have ready and fully baked for the 7/21 agenda? Council member Medicus and Councilmember Reitz, you both have the floor.
Thank you, member, mayor. This is Councilmember Medicus. The hot fun follow up is about complete. Lavi and I worked on that again today. And Councilmember Gonzalez and I are working on the question and direction on budget process, line item number 12 tomorrow. So I believe they both will be complete.
Okay, great, thank you. And okay, and so what will happen if we actually do have all of those items are full? Just be prepared, council members, that we're going to have a really full agenda, or we're potentially going to have an evening where not everything is addressed, and we're going to be prioritizing based on items that require action that evening. So oh, go ahead, Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I think our item will actually be taken care of in their budget process. And so I think we can take that off the agenda for now.
Item, that's line item nine?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful. And council member Medicus, or sorry.
Mayor, did you mean me, because you unmuted me? Mayor? Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes.
I'm I'm okay bumping eight down down the road. You know, to a significantly later time. It's not time sensitive, and certainly 12 is far more time sensitive. So I don't mind moving eight down the road.
Thank you. Then if you're amenable to that, I'll move 12 up where eight is. And then according to what Councilmember Reitz just suggested, I will move line item nine. And then Councilmember Gonzalez, as I said, when we get to the admin report, if you let me know if item, if line 11 needs to stay, or if you're satisfied.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, is there anything else on agenda planning questions, or things that you want Sylvia or I to add, whether it's for one of the next two meetings, or even an upcoming meeting? And then council members, and also for the public, if you would know, Matt has already started posting information on the city homepage that relates to the election period. It's a very short window, and I've noticed in the past, sometimes those of us who might be willing to volunteer, we're not thinking about it this early. And so then when it, the small window opens, sometimes, or if we're trying to encourage people to run, now is actually the time you want to start speaking to people. And Matt, while I'm talking, if you could, even if it's not on the screen, if you would call out those dates, because it is, I want to say, just over a four week window when applications for elected offices, appointed, sorry, the elected official offices are open for the application process.
The dates for filing began Monday, July 22nd, and they end August 17th. Office hours, eight to five again. So Monday through Friday. That is for filing for a place on the ballot for the November 3rd, 2020 election.
And the three positions in staff, correct me if I'm wrong, the three positions that are open for this election in Sunset Valley are the position of mayor, and the two seats for two of our council seats, the two that are currently held by Matt, if you would let me know which two, I believe it's council member
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez and Ellet?
Correct.
Okay, so three, three spots. And like I said, that's a short window, so July 22nd through August 17th. That's the period in which people have to submit their application. Matt, while you've got our attention on this topic, is there anything else related to election, voting, any of that sort of information that would be helpful to mention?
For the primary runoff, that's currently in early voting right now, and the actual election date is next Tuesday, the 14th. All of voting that, well, early voting and voting on the primary runoff day, the 14th, is taking place at Tony Burger. So you might have seen some signs along Jones. No voting will be happening at Sunset Valley City Hall. It's all happening, the closest polling location to Sunset Valley is actually in Sunset Valley at Burger Center. So that's where those signs are pointing.
Thank you. And from information I've seen from others, it seems like that's turning out in our current situation to be better than what we could offer at Sunset Valley, because they have more space and more ability to ensure health, health, safety and spacing. Okay, and with that, I don't have anything else unless council members have any question on the mayor's dashboard. And with that, I'll hand it over to staff to do all of their
My connection is really, really, really slow today.
Sylvia, are you able yet? Well, we can hear you, that's helpful.
Several items on the administration report, and there were a couple of attachments. The first one was what you alluded to earlier. Councilmember Gonzalez had asked for the floodplain status in the way to, in the wake of Atlas 14 adoption by the city of Austin, there's some information attached. Councilmember Rosen Garden requested criteria for impact fees that is scheduled to come back on the 21st of July. The Texas Rule Water Association provide them an invitation to help us do an assessment to the city rate. They have accepted that invitation and are now assembling staff who can assist. And then the council asked for a specific plan of action to be brought back for the lift station. That will be back on 7/21 after we iron out some issues with the engineers and have a more specific plan of action for the council. We continue with the FY21 budget preparation. We will be talking Public Works and a variety of other Public Works related items, utilities, et cetera, this coming Thursday at Budget and Finance. The COVID Recovery Act reimbursement request, the city of Sunset Valley is due about $37,000. We did agree to the interlocal agreement with Travis County and have our first reimbursement request to be submitted this week. We are eligible to receive a 20% upfront reimbursement. Our expenses right now are less than $10,000, so I'm not necessarily sure that 20% would do us any benefit. I think we're ready to submit what we have. And those are eligible expenses through the end of this calendar year, through the end of December. Staff safety and health continues to be a number one priority. We did have a member of Public Works who did test positive for COVID. He is scheduled to return back to work next week. We did backfill as per our emergency plan with temporary services, so that Public Works area is adequately covered. We did have an information request on hotel occupancy funds, specifically their use and their applicability to the farmer's market. And then the the final item is the city attorney municipal court transition, which is scheduled to occur at the latter part of this fiscal year, so that at the beginning of the fiscal year for 21, the Knight Law Firm will take over the municipal court area as well. So the city of Austin, Atlas 14 essentially moves the 500 year floodplain into the 100 year floodplain, which requires revised maps. While the city of Austin has approved those maps, FEMA still has not approved those maps. So the city of Austin has some studies and research to do, then they submit to FEMA, and FEMA issues what are called map amendments. That takes a little bit of time. It's not an overnight, it's not an overnight process, it's significant engineering. A significant change is also freeboard, which is the safe zone between the rising water and the bottom of the lowest horizontal member of a structure. And that was previously a foot. It's gone to two feet, which is significant in areas along the coast that I'm accustomed to flooding 12 to 18 inches is average. So that just tells me where the other municipalities are heading, and that's two feet. So no additional increase in density, meaning you can't add additional living units. And then our land development code will have to be amended to match the new floodplain ordinances. There are some potentially affected properties. There's a map that's attached in this administrative report, as well as the Austin ordinance. We have about 100 properties within the affected area. Now, that doesn't mean they're affected, and now we'll have new flood insurance rates. It means that on the map, they were within one floodplain and have moved to another floodplain. And again, the maps have not been amended, and the maps have not been adopted by FEMA yet. So these are potential, potentially affected properties. I shared the information on the Water Association. We are in the process of finalizing that. There would be no cost to the city. They have asked us to assemble some information. I'm waiting on a list from them as to what was required, so they can get started on that. I've already mentioned a reimbursement request, and I've already talked about the municipal court transition of the city attorney. So if there are no other questions, I will turn it over to Carolyn for the Public Works report.
Sylvia, were you done? I washed.
I think that it sounds like we have an awful lot on our agenda. I have a lot of questions about that floodplain map. So I think we just go ahead and keep the agenda item, and I'll just save them for that time, because we have so much on our plate today.
Okay, great. And then let me, just while we're on that, do you want that to be on the, do you have a based on your needs, which agenda you want that to appear on?
I think that that it really is probably, given what staff can do, so that residents actually get the information. And I think staff is on overwhelm, you know, with people being out right now and stuff. So I think we'll have to just see what staff can do when we have a conversation. If it's an easy thing for us to get a map, people can actually get a sense of what's the impact of Sunset Valley, as opposed to impact to Austin, then that's different. If we're, if we're really so short staffed that we can't do that right now, then it may just take longer. We'll have to have a conversation with the with the city administrator before we can do that, and I'll just get that back to you.
There's a map and a list.
I'll keep it. Oh, Councilmember Gonzalez, were you able to see the information that Sylvia included in her admin report?
I did, but it's just, if it, I'm looking at that list, and I actually probably do have a property that's in that. And so knowing what that impact is as to where we are now, and what that's going to be, isn't really clear to me. And if it's not clear to me, I expect it's not clear to a lot of people who it impacts. So I think it's a very important thing that we needed to show to our residents, rather than just gloss over, so as time allows.
Perfect. And what I'm going to do, Councilmember Gonzalez, is leave it on 7/21, and then leave it to between, for you to lead with, in terms of getting the backup done. And as soon as your staff tells me the backup is done, I'll keep it on whichever agenda that is. And until then, I'll, I'll just roll it down until it's completed.
That's fine. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. And Sylvia, did you have anything else that you wanted to add to the admin report? And then council members, did you have any questions for any of the information that Sylvia has covered so far?
I don't have any additional items, ma'am.
Okay, Public Works and the Police Department, either one of you, either Chief Carter
Mayor, your audio cut out again, but Carolyn's raising
Great, Carolyn, you have the floor, if you'd like to do the Public Works report.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. There's just a few things I want to bring to your attention from the Public Works report. And that's first, that the Valley Creek Park Erosion Control Project is hopefully going to be starting on Monday. We will be closing down the park and the adjacent little parking. The park, the playground equipment was already closed down at this time, so it shouldn't be an inconvenience for anyone. But we will be starting that project. The project should last about two weeks. It should be a pretty quick project happening there. And the other things, there's some things that'll be happening in the next few weeks as well, and that's likely some maintenance project with some crack sealing and decamer ring of the sewer lines that happens kind of on an annual basis. And then I can answer any questions that anyone may have.
Councilmembers, if you would please raise your hand if you have questions. Councilmember Ellet?
Thank you, madam. I have a question. What is the status of the pond?
The pond, the city facilities pond, I believe they have, that Tascos has submitted another kind of thing, and I think Sylvia can answer some of that as well.
I'll take that, I'll take that, Carolyn. We met with the engineers and Tascos, because their first attempt at repair was not complete. It didn't hold water. They have advised they're going to try a second sealer and address some of the other concerns. We're waiting on a, a date for them to assemble and make the necessary repairs, and then we'll have to have a path forward after that point.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any additional questions for Sylvia or Carolyn? And Chief, if you would either raise your hand, or, oh, sorry, Councilmember Gonzalez, did you have a question? Councilmember Gonzalez, did you have a question for one of the two reports?
Can you hear me now, mayor?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I wanted, since I know a lot of people are out right now, I wanted to get a status update on who's taking the de-licensed test for water and when.
Yes, I can update that, too.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have two texts and myself who will probably be taking the de-licensed test. We are trying to get in at the testing site in Waco, Texas. They have, and then I haven't gotten
Muted.
They've actually opened yet. So it's more than likely we'll be testing up at Waco at the end of the month.
I thank you for the information. I continue to register my concern.
Chief Carter, could you give us the PD report?
Yes, I can. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We are continuing to deal with, what we've seen is an uptick in people in people camping in public spaces, leaving shopping carts and personal items in the public spaces. So we've had, we've been doing at least one basket cleanup or one public space cleanup a week. We're just trying to keep everything looking normal as possible. We haven't been enforcing a lot of the little mobile sign ordinances. So we're doing what we can to keep the city looking as normal as possible during this pandemic. But we have noticed that we're seeing a lot more baskets and, you know, trash and campsites around the city. But we're taking care of them as we see them. The Public Safety Committee, kind of along those lines, is we've completed our plans for developing a citywide neighborhood watch program. We'll be bringing something, a presentation to council on it, probably the next council meeting, if we can get it on the agenda. And then on the 24th of June, we had a neighborhood meeting. It was an online neighborhood meeting for the Countrywide Neighborhood. I don't know if everybody is aware, but they've had a few issues with the, related to the bar and other things on their street. So we had a pretty good meeting with about 10 residents online. We were able to come up with a list of things that they would like to see taken care of. Some of them were simple, such as a no outlet sign for their street. Other things are going to take a lot more work between the city and the county to try to get it done. But it doesn't look, it looks like something that we can get accomplished. So, and then they will be part of our neighborhood watch as well so that they can feel like they have, you know, public safety protection and they don't feel like they're left out there by themselves. I think a lot of these issues that they're having are because they don't feel that they're getting adequate public safety protection because they're kind of in between county service and they have only one Sunset Valley residence on their street. But we're going to work with them and try to see if we can clear up some of the problems that they're having.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? For the chief? Or for any of the other reports or the administrative stuff that we've covered or anything we may have missed? Please raise your hand. Councilmember Rosen Garden, I thought that I saw your hand up and then it went down. Please raise it again if you wanted to speak. Okay, and with that, I will move us to our next item, which is approval of the minutes from the June 23, 2020 special called council meeting. Do we have a motion? If so, please raise your hand. Unmuted. Rosen Garden?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Five with Corrections and Agenda Item Number 10.
It does not actually look like we have a consent item listed on tonight's agenda. So this will be just a motion, Councilmember Rosen Garden, to approve Item Number Five. Do we have a second? Looks like Councilmember Reitz, did you want to second that?
Mayor Number Four says council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent.
Oh, it looks like when it printed on my, my printout, didn't print that way. Okay, so you're motioning for Items Number?
Five and 10.
And 10, just to make sure, since I'm, in case there's other typos on my printout, that's the evaluation process, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Reitz, do you approve both of those? Items Number Five and Item Number 10?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That will.
Mayor, we lost you.
Councilmember Elliott, did you have a comment to the two items that are up on this consent approval?
No, I was going to second it, but Councilmember Reitz speeded it to it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
I'd like to pull 10, Mayor.
Thank you. Item Number 10 has been pulled. Were there, so now we have just one item for approval on consent. Was there anything that needed, Councilmember Rosen Garden, did you say that you had edits that needed to be included in that before it's approved?
Yes, those two edits were already sent to Ray Jean and Susanna two days ago.
Okay. And are either of those substantive that should be mentioned to council before we approve it? Okay.
Typos, that's all.
Councilmembers, any additional questions on item, on this item before we approve it? If you would please.
Mayor, we lost you again.
And Sylvia, if you would do a roll call, once you have everybody's vote.
Councilmember Medicas, yes. Councilmember Elliott, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Rosa Garden, yes. Waiting on Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes, please. I, my chat feature's gone again. So yes, I'll look for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Now, again, we have Items Number Six, which is time certain to start at 7:00 PM. And Item Number Seven is one that we would only move to after Item Number Six. Councilmember Gonzalez, would you like to lead? Do you think we might be able to get through Item Number Eight in 15 minutes?
I believe it could go rather rapidly. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Sorry, I was going to let you go ahead. And if you want to punt it to staff, but I thought you might want to do an introduction to it.
We can, we can go ahead and punt it to staff unless Councilmember Reitz wants it. It's, it's fine. Okay, just go ahead and punt it to staff and then I'll do the close. I think that the short version is, is that we would like to get legal review. If you guys agree to this, we'll go through the presentation. If you guys agree to this, we, it's mostly the whistleblower and then some language to get it to go to all the areas and have legal reviews for that. That's our desire. Is that an accurate representation, Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
So that's our hope. We need to have, have this codified. And there, so that's pretty much what it is. It's mostly the whistleblower process. I think that it needs to be a little bit more spelled out than Councilmember Reitz is. But we, we're going to both defer to legal on that as to how much it needs to be spelled out. And that's pretty much what we think about that. And I hope I have put that through. So go ahead, Sylvia, and you can do it and I'll fill at the end.
Okay. Thank you. The current process for resolution of issues raised by, whether it's staff, I think at one point, there was a little bit of confusion and residents were also included in some of this discussion, especially when there was a complaint made against staff. This one is specifically dealing with the human resource policy. There's always the concern that the employee does not have adequate means to have their grievances heard, especially if the grievance is against the city administrator or against the mayor. The way it works is the employee goes to the director. The director goes to the city administrator. The city administrator goes to the mayor. Department heads go, do require council action. And so the portion that Councilmember Gonzalez raised was really within the code about if there's a law being broken or specifically about whistleblower, then the items should go directly to the city council. However, there's some concern that within the policy itself, there's conflicting provisions, especially as related to being able to speak to the city attorney. As you recall, council approved a, an ordinance amendment that requires all work by the city attorney to be approved prior to. So you can see the conflict if a complaint lodged against the administrator, the mayor is made and the city attorney has to ask the administrator or the mayor to work on that item. Councilmember Gonzalez, did I leave anything off?
The person that she is, went through and did a spreadsheet and she's confident that all the other issues were doing it. And when Sylvia was out, Chief also looked at it. And we feel like most things are covered, but there's some things that sort of need to be codified also. The process was specific to one area and the process needs to be moved so that it can be run across all areas. And so those are just things that need to be legally codified. And then this issue with attorney access. And basically, if you're a council member and someone comes to you with a complaint, do you know what to do? And is it spelled out? And I would say that I don't think it is clearly, but Councilmember Reitz feels like it is. And so I think we're just punting that to the attorney so that she makes sure that we're covered legally and that all of us know what to do in that case. Thank you.
So if I may inject here a little bit, so what I would suggest is that in our HR manual, we add, in the whistleblowing policy, that we add the final authority being the council if the violation involves the city administrator and/or the mayor. So I would make that motion. And then the second issue of whether or not a council member, if they're approached by a resident or employee that has a grievance against the city administrator or the mayor, what is the best process? And I would like our legal councils' help on this and thoughts on this.
So I would say so moved.
Wait, okay, that's what I said to start with. We have a motion and so we have a motion and a second. And so then, could you repeat the motion, Wanda, so that it's clear for those of us listening?
Yes, the motion is to amend our HR policy manual to give the final authority in the whistleblowing policy to the city council if the problem involves or if the grievance involves the city administrator and/or the mayor.
Thank you. And with that motion, Roxy?
Can I do a friendly amendment there? Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Friendly amendment is that, you know, just have legal look over this section because there were things that the city administrator said needed to be broadened to, you know, like the one process that she's using right now needs to go to the other things. So just giving legal the authority to review to bring this section in line with what Councilmember Reitz is saying and any other little things that need to go with it.
So I would ask that we.
Just legal review for that section, a small amount.
So Councilmember Reitz, your motion is clear. It sounds like there's a friendly amendment from Councilmember Gonzalez to broaden the scope to be a review of more than that. Do you want to accept that?
Sure, yes.
Okay. And so with that, could we then rephrase the motion to be clear? What exactly is it that we want the city attorney to review and bring back? Are we wanting her to bring back specific changes or just recommendations?
I would like her to bring back a recommendation with specific changes for the final authority, plus also in her review, if she sees anything else that needs to be amended or changed.
In the entire HR policy?
No, the whistleblowing, whistleblowing section.
Just in the whistleblowing section?
Well, this, what's on the screen?
This is Roxy Stevens, the city attorney. May I make a comment that would help in telling you what I need to review? I think in the, I think right here that's on the screen, there is a chart of the grievance processes that are within the city policy that is part of your ordinances. If I can, you know, when I'm reviewing a whistleblower process or a complaint process and that, it would be beneficial to review all of the grievance processes within the human resource policy in order to make sure they all are consistent and don't conflict with each other and don't conflict with any other ordinance. And that way, it would kind of be a cleaner, a red line recommendations.
I would.
So with the motion maker, and this is where I'd look for the motion maker, the second and the city attorney to help make sure that we have a clear motion. It sounds to me that the motion is to have the city attorney review the HR policy without limitation and to bring back a red line version of any recommendations that she has with regards to the grievance process in any part of the HR policy.
Yes.
Second.
Great. And Roxy, so you would be bringing us a red line and from there, council can decide if they want to discuss or if there are portions of it that they would then want to adopt and codify.
Yes, I understand I would be bringing recommendations and suggested changes and provide you red lines.
Great, thank you. Do we have any additional council discussion? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to also try to get back to the page where I had my question. And it was on page six of 241. Just you all know, 241 pages is what we read on Agenda Item Eight alone. On, underneath the city administrator, I wrote a question. Well, what if an employee has created a hostile work environment or sexual harassment? Because it only addresses if the city administrator has created a hostile work environment. Well, what about an employee? That has happened in my experience in life. And so do we want to add that underneath description and person impacted?
Thank you. That sounds like a reasonable question, Roxy. Do you want to respond to that or indicate if you think that should be part of what you're reviewing?
I think it should be part of what I should be reviewing to make sure that there's available and clear processes for any, for anybody within the city to make a complaint such as that, such as the one that was just raised.
Okay, great. And do the motion maker and the second agree with that addition?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I just also want to point out that in the backup, where it says draft, if anybody isn't clear about what that was, that was the original stuff. And we sort of included that just so that people can see what we originally came, worked out. This is, this is something I've worked on since that, since two years before that draft was submitted. So, you know, I think it was like 2012 or 10 or something like that. And so when that draft went through, we had two HR people, two attorneys and two manager types go through this process. And so in direct response to things that we saw on the ground in Sunset Valley. And so I just want to say that that was, that we put that there in case people wanted to use that rather than have to reinvent the wheel. And that's why that's there.
Yeah.
For the attorney.
Yeah. And I would like to add that, yes, I think the Councilmember Rosen Garden. Yeah, and I would like to add that, yes, I think the Councilmember Rosen Garden's suggestion was a good suggestion. I would also add a outside vendor or contractor to that.
Is the second amenable to that as well?
Absolutely.
And Roxy, is that a clear addition to you as well?
Yes, it's clear. In circumstances like this, when I'm reviewing, we always look for a conflict of interest issue and an avenue to go if one exists.
Thank you. Before we call the vote, is there anybody else who'd like to speak, either from the public or any of our council members, before we take a vote on this issue? So please raise your hand. Seeing none, councilmembers, if you would please cast your vote. This is on Item 8, which is to have the city attorney bring back a red line. Sorry, I saw that my audio went out. So the motion is to have the city attorney bring back this item at a future date as a red line, which would then give councilmembers and the public a chance to review, discuss before anything is changed or adopted. Councilmembers, if you would please cast your vote via chat. And Sylvia, if you would please read the vote back once it's received. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Councilmember Elliott, yes. Councilmember Reeves, yes. Councilmember Medicas, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes.
Thank you. And I actually, just because I do know that this next item is going to be a long one, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute break just to let people have a quick break, since the next item, I'm pretty sure will be at least an hour and a half, if not longer, for Items Number 6 and 7. So we will break at 6:00.
Mayor, your audio went out. We will break and return at what time?
Muted.
Right, Sylvia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to try this and see. What issues are you having this evening?
My connection is really slow.
Are you doing your audio via phone or computer?
My computer. I had to turn off all webcams and anything else that was trying to pull.
Pulling it down. Do we have all of our councilmembers?
We have. Yes, all of the councilmembers are here.
Great, thank you. I am going to call back to session, regular city council meeting for the city of Sunset Valley, Texas, for Tuesday, July 7, 2020. It is now 7:05. We are at our time certain item. This is going to be a public hearing to consider a request for a zoning change at 4800 U.S. Highway 290 West from single-family residential to neighborhood office. And for those who are here to speak this evening, we are going to go in the order that's listed. So we will open the hearing, so I'm officially opening the hearing at 7:06. We will start with a presentation. So before we do any citizen comments or any public comments, we are first going to get a full presentation from the applicant and any of the stakeholders, if the landowner, the developer, anything that they want to present. But most importantly, get a clear presentation from staff. Then ensure that councilmembers have had an opportunity to ask questions. This is important because it oftentimes leads the direction of the public comment because much of what people may want to speak to in public comments or ensure that councilmembers have heard and understand clearly, that may get addressed during this presentation period. And so with that, I do have a series of questions, but I want to actually let staff do their presentation before I go through my questions. And then again, we'll make sure that councilmembers at least have answers they need to the presentation information. And then we will open it up to citizen and public comments. And for those of you who are here to make public comments, there will be a timer, so you will have four minutes. I can see that we have a lot of people in attendance this evening, so I can't require it, but I would encourage you all, if you have one who can speak for a handful, that's helpful. Or if you cannot utilize your full four minutes to ensure that we have as much time as possible to allow people to speak, especially if they're wanting to speak to unique positions or statements, questions or comments. And Sylvia, it looks like you have your stuff pulled up and you're ready. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. I will let you take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The property ad question is located at 4800 Highway 290. I have the map on the screen just for reference. It is to consider approval of a request from single-family residential, as is the current land use, to neighborhood office. It's currently a platted 2.10 acre tract that is undeveloped. It is proposed to be a real estate office building, which is not allowed in the single-family zoning district. The applicant proposes changing it to neighborhood office, which is one tier lower than neighborhood commercial, as is called in the future land use map. On March 25, the zoning commission held a public hearing. They voted unanimously to postpone the public hearing. On May 27, they held another public hearing and held a public comment. The proposed development was discussed. There was some request by the commission for Mr. Levy to provide formal text dot approval and traffic accessibility to the property. The zoning commission tabled the item. On June 12, Scott Cunningham with TechStop submitted the memo reviewing the traffic impact study submitted by the applicant. TechStop memo is in favor of both the traffic engineer and the applicant's proposed traffic plans on the property and also a proposed joint-use driveway with 4812 U.S. 290, the neighboring property. That is scheduled to go for a rezoning. There was a site plan that was missing from the submittal, so that is scheduled for an August zoning commission meeting. A public hearing was held. All proper notices were submitted. Zoning commission again heard the request on July 1 and recommended unanimous approval of the zoning in accordance with the city's adopted future land use map. Staff recommends approval of the change in zoning classification based on the proposed development, based on the recommendations of the applicant's traffic engineer and the formal response received from TechStop. Mr. Levy with, who is the proposed developer, has a presentation to share with the council whenever you are ready, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a few questions, Sylvia. And I had asked you, do you have the ability to pull up the three? I think there were three or four reference images just so that as I'm talking to you, everyone in the room who has a computer can see. The first is the, whichever one you have first, you can pull up.
The first is the existing zoning map, which in planning, we refer to this as the existing land use map. This is actually.
Thank you. And would you, with your cursor, sort of motion around to orient people where the two yellow properties, the only one that we are discussing tonight is the.
Corner property.
One that is, right, is adjacent to white. It's a yellow box with Stern's Lane directly beside it. And then adjacent to that is Mon Sunset Valley. It's the ETJ. And for those who are more familiar, it's Stern's Lane and then on the other side is the Sands Motel. This current map that we're looking at was approved in, was the last time that council made any changes, which doesn't mean the changes related to these properties, but the last time that council considered any changes or amendments to this map was in 2016, correct?
Correct. I will let Matt jump in specifically on the dates. I know he's working on that. Matt?
And Matt, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if you would jump in, if you know something that we're not covering. And this, part of this is, I want everyone in the room to get the benefit of the questions I was asking staff in my homework, which this may seem a little bit pedestrian, but it's to start with the difference between our existing zoning versus the future land use map. And could you switch to that one, which is not the existing use? And that one, from what we can see, the last time this was amended, which again, doesn't mean it was this particular property, but the last time that council took any action to amend or change this was in 2011. Matt, and this is where if you would jump in if I'm saying something wrong, I asked Matt if he could determine when council zoning and council deliberated and voted to change the future land use map for this particular property to be neighborhood commercial. And the answer that I received was 1995. Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct. This is Matt. So in my research, I found a presentation that was given to council when they looked at updating the master plan and the future land use map. It was a two-year-long period from 2009 to 2011. A presentation given indicated that the future land use map from 1995 showed the two properties as neighborhood commercial. So I couldn't find anything, an earlier future land use map, earlier than 95. But, so I don't know when those were indicated as neighborhood commercial, but as early as 95, they've been, that's how they've been.
On the map.
Correct.
Okay. And Roxy, would you, this is where it's, because part of my questions were to what extent does that have importance to council, to the developer, to the neighborhood, to the landowner? And so is there anything that you could color in for us on that topic?
Yes, the future land use map, which is up on the screen right now, is part, considered part of the city's comprehensive plan that has been adopted by council. That comes into play because the way that our land development code is set up, when we're, when the council is reviewing and as well as the zoning commission are reviewing application requests for amendments to zoning of the current land use. One of the criteria, there's 10 criteria that are listed in 2.305 of the Land Development Code, which is the chapter that deals with zoning. One of the criteria is that it, when it's being considered, it must fall in line and be pursuant to the future, be in line with what the future land use map has it zoned for. So that is one of the criteria that must be looked at and that's where this comes into play. Does that answer your question?
That does. And if I was going to try to boil that down into simpler terms, I would say it doesn't mean council has to approve something, but it does mean we're supposed to follow this. And the best information I could get today is that since 1995 or earlier, Sunset Valley has publicly indicated that the future use for this property would be neighborhood commercial. Is there, are there any staff members or city attorneys that would disagree with that sort of simpler? Which doesn't mean we have to approve anything tonight, but. The idea of this is not that council should, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
In fact, in fact, the first criteria and then 10, 10 points of criteria that need to be, that are evaluated is specifically stated as the proposed change in the zoning classification is consistent with the goals, standards and policies of the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay, then now I want to give a reminder before I ask my next few questions. The two property addresses, 4800 is the one we're considering tonight. The other, I refer to it as Ms. Angelique's property. Staff, could you remind me what the number is, the address for that property? Is it 4812?
Yes, 4812.
4812. So 4812, just so that we don't, in the few zoning meetings that I've gone to, I do feel like there's a bit of confusion and I don't want to recreate that here tonight. We are not considering anything that relates to 4812 tonight. We're not considering anything that relates to 4812 tonight. We are only discussing and considering 4800. Roxy, did you want, I see your hand is up.
Yes. I just, before we moved on further, I know there'd be a question, because I believe that this, if I looked at it correctly, the request for zoning change is a neighborhood office, which is a tier under neighborhood commercial, which is what the future land use map shows. And in those same 10 criteria, I just wanted to point out in number five, or little V, little Roman numeral V, it also says the proposed change in zoning classification, oh, excuse me, oh, like, it's four, Roman numeral, small four. The zoning classification change requested is no greater than the minimum required to allow for the reasonable use of the land. So that was just something I wanted to point out in the criteria, because I know that, I believe they're asking for a tier below the neighborhood commercial.
So now my next questions are for staff, and again, Roxy, please jump in at any point if we're, if we need your help. So on 4800, as we're looking at it on this map, it has two sides that clearly are not public access, one that butts up to the yellow, single-family, one that sits adjacent to 4812, also known as Ms. Angelis' property. My next questions relate to the other two sides. So the small piece that is on the 290 frontage, does it have an existing curb cut? Yes or no?
Yes. I have it up on the screen.
Great. And so for anybody who's looking on the screen, you should be able to see it. Now, do we have an absolute confirmation from Tech Dot that that curb cut can be used for office, for the designation that we're considering tonight?
Oh, sorry. We do have affirmation from Tech Dot about the access from that existing curb cut. Mr. Levy and his traffic engineer can speak to that.
Great. And then is there an existing curb cut on the Sterns, and this, this photo is good to show that too. So on the long side that sits adjacent to Sterns Lane, is there an existing curb cut there?
There is no existing-
I don't believe, okay. And so this is where even for me, sitting through the zoning meetings, and I'll let you speak to it, and then of course, Erin also, who I've, part of it is that I have not spoken to Erin, I've not spoken to Rob through any of this. I attend the zoning meetings, and so if any of my questions seem odd, that's why. It's because this is the first opportunity to discuss, and I'd rather do it in public so people can hear me asking the question. In reading Tech Dot's information, and even sitting through the zoning meetings, it's not clear to me. It seems as if Tech Dot approved two curb cut, or that they said you can use the 290 curb cut, assuming it's one-way traffic that also utilizes a Sterns Lane curb cut, being that the traffic would come in 290 and exit Sterns. That I'm, is there a way for staff to confirm, yes, that's true, or no? And if so, that's part of where I wonder, if that's what Tech Dot approved, how do you take the egress out and then change it to say the 290 entrance is now going to be for ingress and egress?
So Mayor, I, I can let Mr. Levy address that, but yes, the-
Okay.
The approval from Tech Dot is in, into 290 with exit off of Sterns. Sterns is governed by the City of Austin, and it meets the criteria for a type-two driveway, which Mr. Levy has already been in discussion with the City of Austin.
And then this would be a question for you and/or Roxy. To what extent does Sunset Valley have the authority to say, even if Tech Dot has discussed an ingress or egress point on, on or off of Sterns Lane, to what extent does our city have the authority to say, no, we are not going to allow that?
We can govern sites and development regulations, anything within the site. So we could potentially ask for a building to be oriented in a specific way to not allow access off of Sterns. But the fact that we don't issue a driveway permit, even if the building is oriented in that way, even if those things happen in the City of Austin, you know, it meets their classification to grant it. I'm not sure what, what authority we have, and I'll, I'll let Roxy speak to the rest of that.
And, and part of that, Roxy, if you would speak to that, and then also help for all of us listening, is this, is Sterns, why is there even any issue on Sterns Lane between City of Austin and Sunset Valley? What, is it, I mean, I think I know the answer, but would one of you please address why we would even have an issue where there's potentially two different people saying what can or can't be done on Sterns Lane?
Sylvia, do you want to answer that real quick before I talk about can, how we can regulate development?
Sure. It's an issue of, of boundary. Mayor, if you, you can see the black line is our city limits on the current map in front of you, and our city limits ends at the property line. It's right on the other side of Sterns. So Sterns Lane is actually the jurisdiction of the City of Austin. So-
Right.
Given the impact to the development, the City of Austin would have the right to determine any curb cuts onto Sterns Lane.
Thank you. That's very, I think that that's clear. And then, Roxy, if you would dovetail that, and again, help me and council and, and everybody in the room understand, even though City of Austin has that authority or say-so, to what extent can we say, yeah, you may be able to authorize ingress egress with the Sunset, to what extent can Sunset Valley say, no, that's not allowed?
So that is the reason for the request for an amendment of the zoning classification process. Again, those 10 criteria evaluate different part, different situations or different issues along with what the development would ultimately be. And it does address safety and traffic, et cetera, things like that. Now, the way that the city can regulate, regulate this, regulate any development when issues do come up like this, is that in the Land Development Code, one of the council actions is to, you can add terms of conditions of a recommendation to a zoning commission. And conditions can be something that would allow the property to be used as it, it's, it need, that, as it's, it's being proposed to be used, but, but allow the city to say, well, these are the things that we need to happen in order for this to properly fall within the criteria. That can be done in different ways, depending on what the condition is. In some instances, you can, one of the conditions is to, you could enter a, a development agreement or agreement for some sort of restricted, restrictive covenant or a condition like that where the parties would be the city, the landowner and the developer, that they would agree that this is going to hap, this is what will happen if that zoning classification is changed.
And would that have to go back, so this is more of a procedural question. If the zoning commission has given council a recommendation, can we add that sort of, I don't know what the proper word, if it's stipulation condition, could we add that as part of our acceptance of the recommendation? Or is that something where we would have to give that back to zoning to approve and bring back to us with that included in their recommendation?
No. The council three-year land development code, and it's 2.305, I think it's section H under two, which defines council action. It outlines the type of action that council can take, and one of them is to modify, add, or subtract terms of conditions of a recommendation of the zoning commission for approval of an amendment requested. So that would mean that you can, if there's a recommendation from the zoning commission to change the zoning classification, the council has the authority to do so, and in this, they did it without conditions. In this particular case, the council would be able to add terms of conditions on their recommendation. And that would require only a majority vote of the city council members present pursuant to the Land Development Code.
Okay. And then I'm gonna, this is gonna be my last little bit, and then I'm gonna ask council members if any of you have additional questions that you want answered before I hand it over to Erin Levy. So to be fully transparent, I don't get to make a motion, and I don't get to vote, but I do want to voice very clearly and upfront what my preference would be. Because 4800 hasn't actually purchased 4812, or vice versa, 4812 has not actually purchased 4800. It's very hard for me to understand something that relates to shared driveways, especially because I know the property we're not considering this evening, it not only is single-family residential, the difference between these two properties is that it actually has a house with a person living in it as single-family. 4800, which we are considering tonight, is unique from that in that it is an undeveloped property that has not ever had a single-family residential development on it. My preference would be that council follow what Roxy just outlined, and that maybe that would mean we have to bring it back a second meeting so that she can formalize it and allow everybody to stew on it, review it, and to make, and to give her ample time to draft it. My preference would be that we do everything possible to, if, if we were to approve development here in line with our future land use map, that it seems to me has been outlined since 1995 or earlier as this form of development. The developer's now coming and asking for something one level lower, which to me would be good. However, I do think that the safety and traffic and all of those current concerns are absolutely relevant. And this is where I would like to add, personally, many of you know this, and I know Terry and I have discussed this numerous times, my husband and I purchased and developed 4800, which is on the other side of the Sands Motel. So I have personal experience of understanding the Bartonview neighborhood, their concerns about traffic, and the push and pull of the commercial development along 290, which is you want to maximize the development, you want to be able to put as much as you can on it, and ultimately get as much, whether it's lease, lease revenue, or you want to be able to make money off the property, and that's tough. It's tough to find the perfect use. My use was a perfect use. It was two very small business owners, architect, lawyer, not a whole lot of traffic, not a whole lot of employees, and we, it was a plus to the neighborhood because we were in during the day, we were rarely there on the weekends, we didn't add to the traffic, and we didn't add to impervious cover. So I do really understand the concerns. I also had an office that faced Sterns Lane, so I really did sit in my office five days a week, and I got to see the traffic issue. I could watch people pull off of 290 and do kamikaze moves to pull into my office behind the Sands Motel. So certainly, I've seen people doing it onto Sterns Lane, and that's, that's not just a hypothetical concern. My preference would be that council do everything possible, if they were to approve this, to ensure that there is no ingress or egress of any commercial use in perpetuity onto the residential road. And with that, Erin, when you give your presentation, I'd like for you to also address that, because I heard in the zoning meetings numerous times, it seemed like I heard you say, absolutely, we're amenable to that, and not a problem. So if that's true, then could we just get that out of the way so that the residents and the public that are here can, we can actually work to see if that's a true possibility, which is to approve something on here with the condition that no portion of Sterns Lane ever be used for ingress egress?
Mayor, this is Roxy Stevens. Can I just make a comment before Erin starts?
Absolutely.
I heard you say something about that we would have to wait to, to draft something up if there was a condition that was approved tonight. I just wanted to say that if, if the council were to do any kind of action with a condition, including part of that condition, negotiating an agreement with the developer is necessary in order to effectuate or fulfill that condition, that can be done, and that would give the city, city, including the city administrator, and I, the city attorney, to be able to negotiate such an agreement to, to fulfill that condition with the developer. Just wanted to, to make that clear.
Thank you. That's helpful to me. And so now council members, any of the council members who have questions about the presentation or anything that you want to make sure that Erin covers in his portion of the presentation? Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a list of things. Some of them are for Roxy, and some of them are for the applicant. The ones for Roxy are about the compatibility issue that I, I haven't, I haven't heard that adequately addressed, I haven't heard that adequately, adequately addressed. I, I didn't get the link to the hearing in time, so I haven't been able to, to listen to all of it, because I just got it late this afternoon. And so, so I, I really am not clear, because I know that Mrs., that they have a submission from Mrs. Angelis, that she is opposed to it, and I know that they have a submission from the power of attorney that he, that's obviously supported it. And so that, that concerns me, because I, I think that does bring into play compatibility issues. And I want to, I want a clear thing from Roxy about that, since we do have someone objecting to it. I also want to know what the limits are of people who get to have objections, because as far as I can tell, there are only Rob Buchanan and one other neighbor who have spoken in support of it, and so I want to make sure that there's nobody else in the compatibility area that is opposed, besides Mrs. Angelis. And I would like the information about the specific site plan request that a council member can put forward, and, and I guess whatever else I can be told about the driveway and being able to limit the ingress and egress to 290, or, those are all things. Because I'm not, I, I've heard it said by staff that, that, that the, that the Tech Dot has approved this, but when I read the letter, that wasn't how I read it. So I want to, I want clarity on that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, before you go any further on Ms. Angelis having a denial, there was a letter that was submitted by Ms. Angelis that was typed, that was clearly not Ms. Angelis. Two people entered her residence without her son's knowledge, spoke to her, and signed it. That was on the record at the last meeting. Ms. Angelis and her son, Mr. Locock, who has power of attorney, have expressed support for the development. So I, I want to make that very clear. There was, there was an issue as to the validity of that letter from the onset, and-
Is that not today's letter? Or is that a different letter?
It's-
That's a different letter, and Sylvia may have not seen, the neighborhood, the one that you may have seen today, Melissa, which I also saw, is, it looks like, it looks like the neighborhood maybe did a form letter that basically is like, hey, if you don't have time to make a public statement, we've drafted a statement, please show support for it by signing it. And I think I may have received forty-some-odd signed versions of that same letter. So she didn't type that, but it's also the same letter that many other people signed. But I would echo, one of my, my concerns is actually the opposite, which is, does her power of attorney know that she signed that? How did it make it to her? I, and I believe Mr. Locock is here, and so I, that's something where I'd like for him to speak to it. And Roxy, if you can speak to council members in terms of what we're supposed to be looking at, in terms of Ms. Angelis, what is the authority of what she does or doesn't want?
Yes. In, in, with regard to Ms. Angelis and her property, which is not subject of the agenda today, but she is an interested party, along with the application, we received the power of attorney from Ms. Angelis, which by operation of the power of attorney, Mr. Locock is now the agent. It was a previous person that was, that had been assigned, but they passed away. We verified that with the certificate of death, and by operation of the provisions of the statutory durable power of attorney, Mr. Locock is the proper agent and has the scope and authority to deal with any kind of real property and real estate transactions dealing with that particular property. We have confirmed that and done our due diligence, and so we, we have verified that we are dealing with the proper agent.
Is that, is that the only one that would, that would be affected besides Rob by the, the set book back issue?
I don't understand your question, councilmember.
Do we have to have like compatibility words within, I used to always get letters within a certain amount of, of space that I would have to-
Melissa, are you referencing the within 500 feet, which I believe there's a rule that says everybody, you have to ensure that you've notified all of the adjacent landowners that are within 500 feet? Is that what you're referencing?
No, I'm, I'm talking about like the height restrictions, Mayor, and, and that we, that you can't, that, that was one of the things that I heard during the zoning meeting, that, that we weren't in compliance with, and I just really want that legal aspect- with, and I just really want that legal aspect addressed. If the only person, what I heard was, it was because the adjacent property agreed and Rob Buchanan agreed, we were running over a particular rule that we needed to pay attention to, but it was sort of a no-fault situation because the people who'd be affected, all the people who'd be affected, were okay with it. And I just want to make sure that that's a true statement.
That would be a question for the developer at this point. I don't have, I had not looked at that issue previously.
Sylvia, are we discussing the development? The development, is it within our normal height restrictions for the City of Sunset Valley?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not an issue of height? Do you know, Councilmember Gonzalez, what the issue, what portion of the development?
Is it setback? I think it's setback is the issue, Mayor.
Yeah, I think what she's referring to is if Miss Angeli's property remains single-family, the setback from single-family to neighborhood office is rather large, and it may make the development not doable, but that would be something for Mr. Levy to address.
And Councilmember Gonzalez, okay, in your list of questions, were there any other items where you want staff or Roxy to respond before we move to the next council member's question?
I guess I would like clarification that the text dot curb cut in the presentation from somebody, because the way that I read it, it was only when it was on the adjacent property that text dot was signing off on it, and so I'd like clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any additional questions for the presentation from staff or any questions that you want to ensure the developer answers? Please raise your hand. Councilmember Rosenpardon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move forward with the presentation first.
Are there any other council members who have questions before we move on to the developer? Okay, Erin, you have the floor, and I would ask that council members, as Erin is presenting, also to sort of help him, if you have questions as he's presenting, if you would raise your hand, and that way I can try to allow you to ask questions as he's moving through his presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, attending residents. I appreciate your time this evening. Are you able to see my screen? Because it doesn't show me that my screen reflected.
Yes, I'm seeing what I believe is the first screen of your forty-eight-hundred PowerPoint, the one that you had emailed to Sylvia.
So I do apologize if you see me looking this direction, because I'm going to be looking at that screen as I'm talking as well. Obviously, we're speaking about forty-eight-hundred-two-ninety, and as everyone has seen and stated, we're referencing this property here. And as we saw in the future land use map dating back to, as stated, nineteen ninety-five, it's been proposed as neighborhood commercial. In a function of trying to lower the impact to the property as a sustainable developer and in consideration of a residential community, we have proposed a neighborhood office zoning. It has a lower impact, and it doesn't include any retail use, so as a function, the impact of trips generated to the property is significantly lowered. Just a quick showing of those affected, two-hundred-foot radius is shown here from the furthest point of the property, not from the building. So just to give you an indication of where the building sits in the property, but two-hundred-foot radius, five-hundred-foot radius, just as a reference. I wanted to show how there is a natural delineation between commercial development and residential development, and how we've made an effort to adhere to that natural division that you found. We also wanted to show that in our study for design, that we were considering massing, and that our massing based on the zoning allowance for both scale of vertical and volume is in line with all the commercial development along the two-ninety access. Another consideration, and as mentioned in regard to Miss Angeli, we first engaged the neighborhood, our Miss Angeli and other neighbors, to get a conversation going with the PDNA in early March, prior to our first application, and that was to show our effort of trying to be transparent and work with the community to sort through any concerns. The first and major concern that we knew, being adjacent to Miss Angeli, is that there's a concern of privacy while she still resides in her single-family residence. Now, as stated, Miss Angeli did agree to and for, and has been carrying since as her agent, our application for a zoning which will offset the hundred-foot compatibility setback that has been brought up. Now, correct, if this property is not rezoned, it will trigger compatibility setback, which would make it difficult to develop on the property. But while she is currently in residence, and if both of these properties were to be rezoned, we wanted to consider the design of privacy. So we took a different viewpoints, and I'll show you on the next slide here, at twenty-five feet, to consider any views into adjacent residents. The only residence that you can see from the property is Miss Angeli's. And I want to show here, as a result, we considered our design for concept to show our core building core here, to remove any viewpoints that would be facing her house. So this side of the building in concept shows us that we've been, we installed clear-story windows, which are above sightline, so you wouldn't be able to view over toward the property, and the building core, the center of the building, as well obstructs any view to their property. We also are going to be using a landscaping berm where we build up the elevation, the topography of the natural landscape to conceal the parking and pollution from lights from vehicles in that property. Again, here's just another view of what a landscaping berm looks like, for those who may be unfamiliar with the terminology. And with the show again, in our consideration, this is viewing the property from two-ninety. So as you enter the property and you go under the building, you are on grade of the street elevation. However, we're using our spoil from any development of the building to build up landscaping around it and create a screen, a visual screen, from where the cars are parked underneath. When we discussed with the neighborhood starting back in March, it was very evident that the main concern was traffic safety. They vocally had disclosed that a lot of times people are cutting over from two-ninety exit ramp in proximity of this ramp exit to Stern's Lane. So this obviously triggered for us a conversation with our traffic engineer and text dot on what are possible ways to mitigate this concern. There's also was a concern about that there's only two access points into the residential community, Dudmar Drive and Stern's Lane, and in previous applications for zoning changes, some of the uses caused fears for the neighbors that people would be trying to cut through the neighborhood to access the property, part of the reason why we did the analysis. Through the analysis done by the traffic engineer and reviewed through several conferences with text dot, and ultimately with text dot's response to that memo, it was determined that utilizing any kind of safety barricades, whether they be striping, flexible delineators, concrete barriers, now, as the neighbors know in the conversations we've had in several Zoom meetings, that I was willing to participate in the improvement of this exit ramp to discourage people from wanting to cut over. Now, text dot said basically, one, they don't want to discourage residents from the ability to cut over, even though it's not safe, but two, that safety barricades also create some negative consequences, and you'll find that in both the traffic memorandum that was provided by the traffic engineer and text dot's review and approval. So through these various explorations, it was determined that, again, to address the largest concern of the neighbors being safety, that the safest course of action would be a one-way traffic flow through the property, entering at the existing driveway cut and exiting at Stern's Lane. Reason being that if the exit was also on the two-ninety, you've created another, what they call, contact point. So you'll have people exiting here, you'll also have people exiting here, it does create the scenario for potential accidents. Again, this study was done by licensed traffic engineers. The assumption in this study, first of all, they use the table of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, because the use provided for the property is under a threshold that requires additional traffic impact analysis. Also, it assumes a fifteen-thousand-square-foot building, and I do want to be clear that while the zoning does allow for a fifteen-thousand-square-foot building, the fact that we are in the Barton Creek Recharged Aquifer Sensitive Zone, we will never get to fifteen-thousand square feet because of impervious coverage limitations, both due to just impervious coverage and the parking requirement of three-hundred square feet of building per parking space. So in reality, our capture is probably about forty-four to forty-five parking spaces. In this current assumption, you'll see that in the AM and PM peak hours, they're talking about the number of entries and exits per hour, and you see on the exit onto Stern's Lane, in a peak hour, it's twenty-five cars per hour, so that's less than, that's one car for two minutes or greater, per two minutes or greater. Also, just to be clear, again, there's no internal capture for neighborhood office, meaning, internal capture meaning that just passerbyers on the two-ninety access that would wind up wanting to utilize this property, because there is no retail or neighborhood commercial component, pardon me, it's for neighborhood office use only. So continuing in our study of our concept and developing based on the traffic memo and the text dot approval, and I just do want to be clear, and it was asked, were we willing to look at a two-way access off of two-ninety? That's actually the first design iteration that we had created. That's where our design started. Our design has come to this point due to the traffic analysis that was provided by both the traffic engineer and approved by text dot. Now, if text dot and the traffic engineer, through any request of city council and city staff to revisit a two-way traffic for the sake of approval, if they are able to do that, we would gladly do so. I'm only following the lead of everybody that I've been working with alongside with trying to work with the neighbors to create the least traffic impact as possible as far as for mitigating safety concerns.
Erin, can I stop you there and have Roxy? Can you go back to that one slide? Because this sort of hits the crux of, if what you just said is true, so I'm going to assume what you just said is true, which is, you're saying, I'm amenable to either one, I'm following the lead of what I've been told to do.
Correct.
So Roxy, in this situation, this goes to the question, did text dot approve the two-ninety entrance contingent on there being the second, which is what they're calling the egress to allow for one way? Or can we take their approval and say, we're going to take the ingress, we're not going to take the egress, and we're going to make the entry point the ingress and egress? Do we have the ability to do that, or do we have to kick it back to text dot?
You have the ability within the land development code to place that as a condition upon your action, but you also, you know, you also have the ability to ask for an additional traffic study or any additional information, if you feel that the city council needs that in order to, before they make the decision on what action that they can take.
Okay, and then my, yeah, my input on that would be, I don't think we should be requesting a traffic study if we already know the conclusion we're wanting to lean towards as a community, which is to only have one ingress egress point. If the purpose of the traffic study is to say we don't want any commercial development, I think we then run afoul of our own future land use purpose. So the other reason this is for the residents, and Erin, this is a little bit of a deviation, but I wanted to get this in. In doing the research on this, one thing that I noticed in one of the aerial shots of the Sands Motel is that they do actually have a curb cut that goes onto Stern's Lane. My experience, again, of having been a landowner over there, I shared a driveway with them. We struggled daily with people cutting through our property to get into the Sands Motel, and it was a problem, because people would come in, they would cut through so fast that we would have dirt kicking up as people were peeling through what the Sands Motel looks like, they have two entry points on the front of two-ninety. My concern for the community back there is that if and when the Sands Motel redevelops or changes ownership, unlike this property, Sunset Valley will not have a say, correct, Roxy and Sylvia? We will not have any say over what the Sands Motel does.
Correct. That's completely City of Austin.
That's correct.
Okay, so this is what I anticipate is likely to happen, doesn't mean it will, but depending on who chooses to develop that property, I think it's going to be very easy for them to take that existing curb cut that's on that property that exits onto Stern's, which is currently just being used for, I think, maintenance and employees, maybe access to their backyard for mowing. My concern is that it will be very easy for the next developer to say, to use that as ingress egress for the entire development. So where we may approve something, what may come down in the future is that those residents not only have forty-eight-hundred dumping onto Stern's Lane, they would have forty-eight-hundred plus the Sands Motel, both dumping onto Stern's Lane, which is why my preference would be for us to not allow that. Erin, continue.
Okay, thank you. So in that, following again, the lead of the licensed professionals and concerns from the neighbors that led us to this one-way traffic flow here, I'm just showing what the site plan would look like with the existing driveway entry, one-way flow through the property, and then exiting back on the Stern's Lane to leave. I also want to show just that we are trying to think about how to create amenity for the community, because right now it's currently a field of weeds. From the get-go, we had anticipated trying to put in a jogging trail and just some open field, plainfield space, just to provide some amenity to the community. In addition to our attempts to visit traffic safety and the concern from the exit ramp, as stated, I have been working with Ford on the adjacent property for creating what would be a shared access, and in our private, obviously, because it's required to be a private document between private owners, but once the easement is recorded, you see what would happen is there would be a point of entry here, we would be deleting our existing driveway cut to then move the ingress into the property further away from Stern's Lane. Another concern from neighbors is wildfire safety, and I want to point out that this neighborhood has the ideal conditions and environment for wildfire. You have topography of sloping hills upward towards the neighborhood from the creeks down below. You have proximity to fuel types, the vegetation, dry vegetation, you have proximity to sources of fire, that being hikers, homeless people, the highway trash that comes flying by. So all of these things are conditions for wildfire to creep up into this neighborhood from down below. You also have a neighborhood of dense homes that are within fifteen feet of each other. You also have limited egress points, you have one, two points to exit this neighborhood. So these are obvious and legitimate concerns for wildfire safety. I want to show you here, as I stated, we are sustainable designers and builders, I've been engaged with Barley and Pfeiffer, who are notably some of the most sustainable designers in the field. Our building has been intentionally designed to be a non-combustible construction type for wildfire safety purposes, and it also has fire sprinkler in the design. There are techniques for the neighborhoods themselves to have wildfire safety prevention, there's a program through City of Austin called Ready, Set, Go, and it's just- And it's just, you know, information for families on how they can protect their personal property. Warren Central Texas is a listserv that can notify people for via text when there's a wildfire event. And then they have something called Firewise Neighborhoods and Committees, meaning that there's a leadership team in the neighborhood. That provides some support for preventative and evacuation in such events. Now I want to point out what the concerns, fears, as they might want to raise tonight. And talking points of the neighborhood have been in this process, because I have been highly considerate in every step of the way. There's concern that our traffic analysis was started in March and done over the course of COVID-19. I just want to be clear about that. Again, our impact as a neighborhood office zoning is minimal to the point that it does not cross a threshold. For a traffic analysis that requires tickers, for example, to count car traffic. We, we do not have what they call as internal capture. We only have capture of the use participants, not from any type of commercial use. There's been a notable and understandable, I want to be clear, this is understandable and I. Totally hear concern around egress onto Stern's Lane. Now, again, the study that we've done was for the sake of mitigating safety concerns for the neighbors. So unfortunately, it resulted in an outcome that may not be amenable to what they were hoping to hear as a neighborhood. Because Tech Dot, City of Austin and Sunset Valley are all going to agree to a memo. That was provided by a licensed traffic engineer and approved by Tech Dot. Now, again, I, I as the developer, and I have stated this both to neighbors and to staff and commission during the commission meetings. That I am as agreeable as it gets and I'm happy to do whatever. The neighborhood and the city feels is the appropriate course of action. All I've done is follow, again, follow the lead of licensed professionals. They may say that my traffic, that I hired my traffic engineer, and I want to be clear that they are a third party licensed engineer. I have no say in their memo. I have no influence in that. And he is available this evening. I made sure that Cody Stone, my traffic engineer is available to speak should anyone on council have any questions. They may want to raise the point that we didn't solve the exit ramp problem, and I agree that the exit ramp is a problem. The traffic engineering firm, ATG and Tech Dot, both stated that the mitigations. Are harmful, more harmful than helpful. However, I've also stated to the community members. And I am a person of my word, whether they want to believe me or not. That I would continue this conversation and push against Tech Dot because we've encouraged both City of Sunset Valley and City of Austin. To encourage, to request of Tech Dot to study this exit ramp further. Because obviously there are some concerns around traffic safety. However, I want to be clear that our property alone is not the trigger point. This is a longstanding issue. There is a concern from the neighborhood that if, that any egress that we have is going to. Be an issue during rush hours and during the holiday seasons due to backups that lead into the commercial area of, pardon me. Of down towards Brody Lane. Again, in the study shown, even in our peak PM hours, we're only looking at one car per every two minutes that would exit the property. And I, I know this is just a table for trying to assume calculation. But again, I just want to be clear to show how minimal the impact is of the number of vehicles on this property. Stern's Lane is a residential collector and it shouldn't have any commercial traffic. And, and as the mayor just stated, some of those concerns. And again, like I said, City of Austin right of way, City of Austin has told me that they defer to Tech Dot in this situation. Tech Dot and the traffic engineer have determined that that would is the quote unquote safety, safest. Pardon me, safest approach is a one way traffic flow. Should it be requested to revisit a two way flow, I will absolutely take that course. I just want to be clear that technically that might not be as safe. I just want to be clear. There may be points raised about quote unquote speculative zoning. That we can't rezone this property without rezoning our neighbor Ms. Angelie's property at 4812. Again, I, I want to be clear that rezoning her property, first of all, was tabled as Sylvia had mentioned. Because their conceptual plan needs to go off through public notice. That is, that is in their hands and it will be out for public notice prior to the next commission. However, a zoning approval, as stated by everyone who's been speaking so far on this property, is not dependent. Upon the approval of the neighbor. Point raised and asked by Ms. Gonzalez, compatibility setback of 100 feet to an adjacent single family zoning. That is accurate. Development permit and building permit cannot be approved. Should it encroach 100 foot setback of compatibility if the adjacent property is zoned single family? If the adjacent property is zoned for neighborhood commercial for the future land use map and our application to do so. Even if her use is single family, it's still zoned commercial, which would negate the compatibility setback. And thus the reason for us taking such extensive concern into our design for privacy for her to. Not impact her quality of life. Wildfire safety, just the concern around any new development in this property would, would. Make it unsafe for the neighbors in the event of a wildfire. Again, our building design is non-combustible. Is there a neighborhood plan? I, I actually, I'm asking this to the neighbors because I would like to hear when it's brought up because nobody's ever. Brought this up to me, but is there a neighborhood plan? Is there a Firewise Committee for your neighborhood? Do you have an evacuation for your neighborhood? Can we participate in the plan for your neighborhood rather than be seen as an obstruction? Again, just willing to be transparent and participate. Let me see here. Quick rendering of, of the concept in color, just so you can start to visualize where we're going. We're looking at using elements such as rafters and smaller scale windows to reflect the residential. Component of the neighborhood. We're going to be using vegetative screening. You're not seeing in here the landscape burning. That's just a rendering of an artist in turn. Again, thank you for your time. I'm happy to, I'm just going to make myself available for answering all questions. Let us know if you want Cody to address anything. He's here to address traffic questions.
Thank you. Council members, would you please start raising your hands if you have questions? Aaron, would you move back to the best of your images that shows your conceptual. Site plan from aerial view, so not the. Thank you. Okay. So yeah, either one of those is good.
This is really the best demonstration.
So if council were to move forward with something that completely limits any access to Stern's. How does it change your ability to develop this as you have conceptualized it?
I can, and I apologize if this takes me a second, but I will pull up for you a two way traffic site plan concept.
Could you do that? Cause I think that would be helpful. I do remember seeing that somewhere in all of this.
Again, this is where we started our design. And we moved to the, the one way flow per the design shown by the. Memo of the traffic engineer. So you can see here, it's a wider driveway because it accommodates for two way traffic. The building footprint now becomes wider versus narrower because of one way versus two way flow between parking spaces. And then same would happen here. You have enough ability for two way traffic alongside parking spaces. So there is.
And so.
Yeah.
For you as a developer, you are. This would be fine for you. Maybe not your first choice, maybe not the maximum use, but you would be.
It, it frankly, it doesn't change anything for me and I, and I've been transparent with everybody from the get go. This plan is totally fine for me. I will be clear. It's just all it is, is I've spent a lot of time and money to backtrack. That's all it is. It's not like it can't be done. It does, it does affect, it does affect the efficiency of how the building operates. I'll be clear about that, but that's not the concern we're talking about here. The concern is, you know, for the neighborhood, obviously.
And so Roxy and Sylvia and looking at this, is this, if, does council with what was posted and what they have in front of them. Do they have the ability if they wanted to, to approve the zoning recommendation based on this? Plan that's in front of us right now?
You have the ability to restrict access off of Stern's, which would allow you to. Accept his two way. And that's going to kick it back to Tech Dot, but that's on Mr. Levy to resolve with Tech Dot. That, that has nothing to do with us.
And does this change that back question? Sorry.
I just wanted to add that, yeah, this is Roxy Stevens. Council may add conditions on the recommendation from the zoning commission. So that you all have the authority to do that. If, if that's what you wanted to change, you could add that as a condition.
And for Sylvia and or Aaron. Does this change anything about the setback from Ms. Angelie's property? Does it, is it?
No. It, it doesn't change anything in that, as you know, stated, there's a hundred foot compatibility setback that is. Triggered until the point that her property is rezoned. Once her property is rezoned, the, the setback is deleted.
So if council were to approve this tonight, does that mean you're limited from getting a building?
I still cannot develop until her property is rezoned.
And so you're aware of that risk and you're willing to take that risk?
I mean, I've been willing to take the risk with every effort I've made up until today.
So I can see where you don't, the version where you were moving the driveway close to her property and even, and also the image where you would potentially open up. A shared access between the two properties in the future. Those make sense to me, but what I'm worried about is making sure we can approve something that you can actually construct and utilize. Now. You, you can't do those things while she's still living there.
Right. But you know, I, I see it and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but these are two independent things of each other zoning and the ability to get a building permit and plan approval. So I mean, that's, that's something I'm aware of and that's a, you know, for lack of a better word, risk I'm willing to take. Reason being so because, and if, if anyone does request to address Ford, he can speak on his own behalf. But we've been working very agreeably together. And. You know, I said to Tech Dot, I'm not, I'm going to be transparent. I said to Tech Dot, if we had a two way traffic flow. And we do a future use of a joint use access. There, we've only taken the traffic further away from the intersection at Stern's Lane. There, there would be.
Well, you've, you've, you've taken the ingress traffic further away from Stern's Lane, but you've then doubled or tripled the egress traffic onto Stern's.
No, 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 no. Their property would be exiting. It's an, this is a two way ingress and ingress. Here. So if we, if we were approved on a two way, on our current existing as a two way with nothing on Stern's. What would happen is when this gets deleted, all the traffic is all the way out here versus closer to the intersection. So I'm saying, what I'm trying to get is, I was trying to get Tech Dot to understand that if we did a two way traffic. Flow now and we go to a future joint use, you've now taken all of our traffic that much further away from Stern's Lane. That's what I was trying to get at.
And maybe you just answered this and I didn't understand it. That, the ingress part of that makes sense. What about the egress? So the traffic from this, this site?
Yeah, I apologize if my diagram doesn't reflect it. There should be an area coming out here as well. It's, it's, it's ingress and egress. This driveway. For our property, if it was a one way flow, would make one way only. Still going out into Stern's Lane. If it's a two way flow and there's no connection to Stern's. Our two way flow would then be happening at this new driveway point. So I'm sorry if it's confusing, but I, I thought it was clear and I could actually, let me see if I can do this for you real quick. Basically what I'm saying is that this. Is, is really this. So if, if our property is a two way traffic flow of our existing. Sorry, I'm sorry, everybody, if this is taking me a second here. What, what I'm saying is if this was the same situation. Come on. Oh, sorry. If we have a two way flow here. We delete that, then what happens is our two way flow will in the future become this. And it'll be right here. Coming out to the same, same point right here. There won't be any access onto Stern's. Is that clear?
I know that it is clear, but I don't want to ask, I don't want to keep.
The, 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 basically I've taken steps unlike most people, but I've, Tech Dot said that these access roads are horrible. Because there's no, there's no common development happening. There winds up being old driveway access points at every property. What I've said, I was taking the step to work with my neighbor to say, hey, when this property is redeveloped, it's going to trigger the requirement. For a new joint use, which would then delete. Another access point and make the only access point for both properties right here. So then what happens is we wind up taking, again, taking the expense and the time to delete an existing driveway and connect our driveway to this access point.
But is there still an opening in Stern's Lane under that scenario?
There would be no, there's on a two way flow out here, there's no connection to Stern's whatsoever.
But that would be something that you can say you're willing to do, but it's not something that you can develop now.
I, what I can do is I can do a two way access, should it be granted. And approved by Tech Dot, which with enough conversation, you know, obviously. It's possible. What I'm saying is if we have a two way access point just on 290 currently. We can do what we plan to do as designed. And then in the future, when this property redevelops, we'd be deleting our driveway and connecting to that property to remove one additional access point from 290.
And that's where Roxy, you're, the, the attorney in me says, yeah, but there's about three things that could change between now and then. So what, what documents are in place to ensure that that?
I'm happy to share with, I mean, Ford can speak to it clearly and honestly himself, if anyone would like to hear from him. But we were engaged in conversation today, just fine tuning the language of the easement. But the easement and maintenance agreement attaches to the property. And it states that it's triggered by any application for redevelopment of that tract of land would force a joint use access.
So is there a reason you can't do your ingress egress at the current curb cut now? And then when that future date happens? Where all those other pieces align?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. That's what, that's what our proposal would be. The only reason, again, that we moved off of the two way was a result of the traffic memo. And if, and if you want, if we want to bring Cody on here to speak to it. Cody can tell us if he thinks that we could revisit and make this a two way access. Rather than the one way floor he proposed. Again, the reason for that was just a function of mitigating safety concerns.
And Cody, you have a hot mic, so you're welcome to jump in.
Sure. Yeah. Thanks for, for letting, for letting me join and discuss. My name's Cody Stone. And I've been working in transportation for over seven years now. I'm a professional engineer. And it, it's the same thing that, that we discussed with Tech Dot when we were looking at the site. Was really, you know, challenged because of how closely a lot of those driveways are spaced. And so our primary review is, you know, safety and making sure that, that we have. The, the best safety with the current development that's proposed. And minimizing safety issues that could occur. When it comes to this location, the reason that we moved towards the one way operation versus two way coming out on the 290 frontage road. Is it introduces another conflict point. And the more you have of those, it's, it's not ideal. And then also you have that exiting ramp. ramp um, in close proximity. So you're creating a conflict point that has a lot of drivers that are unsure of themselves and how fast you accelerate and what other vehicles that you're you're running into. So uh, the actual amount of distance that you need to be away from a gore point to have exiting traffic coming out of a driveway is typically 425 feet. Now, the freeway was built um, with a little bit of a different interpretation and that's why you have the current situation that you're in with the Sterns Lane and 290 Service Road was, uh, there's not really proper driveway consolidation and it's it's very close to that ramp. Um, and so we looked at ways to minimize the impact of the development and to do that, we want to minimize the conflict points and and not allow that egress at a second point in very close proximity to Sterns Lane. Um, and so our our thought was to exit traffic onto Sterns Lane where there's already an existing exit that people are already going out of and that the amount of impact is there aren't, uh, you know, an undue amount of vehicles that are attracted or leaving the site. Uh, we did use that trip generation manual to estimate the number of trips. So that's where that's coming from with the one-way traffic versus providing both ingress and egress.
Thank you. Council members, do we have any additional questions for um, either of these individuals? Council member Rosengarden, you just need to unmute yourself and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So question for um, the developer and for uh, Mr. Stone. Is there any way versus having to do an ingress on 4800 to work with the neighbor next door and get the ingress egress on 4812 now versus later?
Um, so I will say that I've had this conversation with Ford and the reality is that Ms. Angelie is, to my knowledge, she's 89 years old. Uh, we don't want to create a scenario that's going to impact her quality of life. So that was the purpose of creating a vehicle at future development to trigger the requirement of a joint use access. Should we be doing that now? We're now introducing uh, commercial traffic to the front of her property while she lives in her residence.
It's just the best safety mechanism for everybody. Um, yes, I understand wanting to give her
I'll just be honest, like, I I'm not going to do that to an 89-year-old woman living in her residence. I just don't feel that's proper.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from council members? Okay, and then last call for staff and Karen ICU staff and uh, city attorney, if there's anything that you all think we need to re-highlight before we hand it over to public comment. And council member Medicus, you, if you unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just had a question. I heard two setback numbers. I heard 500 feet and 100 feet. Could you clarify that for me?
The, that's in, that's in regard to notification for a zoning change. The 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 100-foot is a building design of compatibility setback. They're they're two different things.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Council members, any additional questions? And so for public comment, again, because I don't think we have and also because we're not in chambers or we have the benefit of being in person, there's not a way for me to easily moderate if there is a designated speaker. So for those of you who do know each other on this call, if y'all have designated that, it'll just be based on um, good faith and who raises their hand or doesn't raise their hand. Um, but the idea would be, we have a time certain stop for our meeting at nine o'clock. So at that point, I will have to call for council to extend the meeting. Um, and the meeting can then extend up until 10:00 PM. By ordinance, um, unlike City of Austin, we are required to not have our meetings go past 10 o'clock no matter what. Um, so for those who want to speak, I would ask that you take into consideration what you've heard this evening, um, and use your four minutes. Um, and if at all possible, um, give, not use your four minutes so that we can have as many people speak as possible. Um, and then the last thing would be, once you've spoken, I'm not going to be coming back and doing a second um, speaking, only because I know we won't have time to do that. So please make sure that you get all of your comments and questions. Should, unlike in the zoning meetings, I also want to alleviate pressure that the community maybe feels that council's going to come out of left field with a motion and you're not going to have an opportunity to speak again. This is just a public hearing. There's no action connected to it. So the public comments, um, it's sort of a safe zone. There's no action on the table. There will be no action on the table. That doesn't come up until we get to the next item. Um, and should there be a council member who does choose to make a motion, whether it's to accept the recommendation or do anything, oppose the recommendation, anything, it actually would allow for another opportunity for public comment. Um, so I just want to make sure that the public who came this evening, they don't feel like this is your last chance to say something before council takes action. And with that, I will start um, pulling the people who have raised their hands. And it looks like the first one that is showing on my screen is Horacio Gasquet. And so you, if you un, unmute you. Can you hear me now? You have a hot mic. I can. And so you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Horacio Gasquet and I reside at the extreme northernmost house at the end of Sterns Lane. I oppose the zoning change request for 4800 Highway 290. I don't speak for everyone, but from the public comments, you can see that there's a great deal of consensus from our community. Since submitting my recent written public comments, I have attempted to familiarize myself in the Sunset Valley Land Development Code and uh, the 10 conditions required for zoning change. Specifically, I see uh, issues where we're failing the requirements for criteria 1, 3, 5, and 8, and I think also 6, if Text Dot permit to Highway 290 can be considered a utility. There is no problem with 4800 remaining and being developed as a single-family uh, land use today. It is compatible with all the neighboring properties. For those who do not have the full story, 4800 today is essentially the same situation as in the summer of 2006, where Sunset Valley City Council representatives at the time rejected the zoning change request because then as now, it was evident that 4800 does not, is not viable as a non-residential property by itself with a neighboring property at 4812 zoned a single family as it is still today. Pursuant to the section 2 dot 505, section B, paragraph 1 stipulates that effective buffering of residential districts. We've talked about the 100-foot landscape setbacks, so I'm going to move quickly. Just like in the movie Groundhog Day, we are here repeating a storyline that has already played out fully in 2006. Precedent matters here because this application still does not satisfy at least four of the 10 conditions required for zoning change. Then as now, it became clear that 4800 is not viable as a non-residential land use without the help from the adjoining property at 4812. In the Land Development Code pursuant to section 2 dot 3, paragraph A, section 3, which states, "Applications for special use permits, site plans, zoning changes, zoning amendments, and zoning approvals, which involve the same development, may be considered together." The key phrase there being the same development, which also means developed at the same time with one site plan that straddles both properties. At the ZAP hearing, 4800 was voted on under the assumption that 4812 would be zoned non-residential. This assumption is not true at this time, creating a non-conformance that advanced to city council today. And that was not debated by Zach Commission at the time. What I would like to see happen is for Mr. Levy to advance a true joint development project that utilizes both 4800 and 4812 when 4812 becomes available, addressing Text Dot concerns for access to Highway 290, avoiding the unwanted driveway onto Sterns, and providing sufficient room along Highway 290 to implement a safe entrance similar to the design of the entrance to the Burger Stadium entrance on Highway 290 just east of the Cane Rosso Restaurant. This would be an alternative that I think the neighborhood could support. City Council needs to know that Text Dot will approve a two-way driveway access to Highway 290 specifically for 4800, if developed alone, without a corresponding access to Sterns, which we oppose. Our understanding is the answer is no. Jean Wink- Wilkins will speak to that further in the future. We have legitimate concerns about unintended cut-through and that demonstrates that condition number eight has not been met. Erin Levy submitted a traffic memo that is theoretical and focused on the development itself. No attempt was made to pull public accident data and to analyze the danger at the site, even theoretically. It is
Your time is up.
Thank you very much. We look forward to your response.
Thank you. Jean Wilkins?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address the council. First, I want to mention uh, something that Erin brought up. Uh, there are two roads that go in and out of the neighborhood. However, Studmar would really not be used in case of a fire. We do have a fire marshal or a a captain and it's Horacio and also Terry works with him. Uh, we have an active fire wise group and we've had presentations by the fire marshal. At that presentation, it was clearly stated that in case of a wildfire, the main point will be to get the residents of Montecristo out. Um, there's a large nursing home adjacent to the east. So really, we have one exit. We've been told that. Um, I've been tasked to explain the concern the neighborhood has with the discrepancy found in the June 12th Text Dot letter from Scott Cunningham approving a joint use driveway further west on 290 West, which is a curb cut to Ms. Angelie's property. There is no curb cut granted by the Text Dot letter to the property at 4800. Please bear with me as I read. I have the Text Dot letter. I have a couple of sentences highlighted. The developer, Town Bridge Incorporated, has negotiated a shared use connection with the neighboring property to allow access for both properties further west from Sterns and considered a feedback given by the Barton V Neighborhood Association to limit congestion entering the neighborhood. It also a little bit further states, since the new joint use driveway is further west than Sterns Lane, and then it goes on, there's some other consideration. There is nothing in this letter that says a curb cut at 4800 is approved. So what does this mean to the neighborhood? Because as we all know, from previous meetings and emails between Mr. Levy and myself, um, Ms. Angelie is not going to allow, nor should she, development on her land, including a commercial driveway. Um, a joint driveway also might not be feasible in the future. The impact to the Barton V neighborhood is that if no curb cut is permitted on 4800 and Ms. Angelie rightfully at this time does not want commercial access on her property, that means that all of the commercial traffic will go on Sterns, which is a residential road. There has been no site plan brought forward using Sterns for entrance as well as exit. And a restriction or de-covenant overlayer, however, should be put in place to limit access to Sterns. This is what the neighborhood adamantly wants. Let me be clear. I do not want any commercial use of Sterns. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, sorry, Jeremy Wheelis?
Hey, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I reside at 3219 White Drive, 78735. I'm opposed to the zoning change. I am recognized by the Texas Board of Professional Engineers and engineer in training in the state of Texas. I practice structural engineering with an emphasis on bridges. Um, as you all know, two professional engineers have weighed in on this development. They've gen- they've generated two documents related to the property. Um, they've they've been discussed. It's a memorandum by Text Dot and a memorandum by the Alliance Transportation Group, which was developed by Cody Stone. Thank you, Cody, for speaking this evening. Uh, all the documents have been attached to a brief letter that I sent to the city council. If you'd like to review it, review them further, they're all in one little package. Um, my reading of the information left me with three general subjects to speak to. Um, the the entrance to the proposed facility off of 290. Uh, for me, and it sounds like Ms. Cardona, it's unclear what Text Dot is actually approving. Uh, Text Dot doesn't give a specific address. And like Jean says, it, uh, you know, they don't indicate what they're specifically approving and where the driveway to the facility is to be located. Um, the second point is the intersection. Both the Text Dot engineer and Cody Stone indicate that mitigation measures should be considered to manage the intersection of the off-ramp, Sterns Lane, and the driveway to the facility. Both the engineers in their respective memos provide strategies for mitigating the risks related to those off-ramps that include lane delineators, concrete curbs that would uh, channelize the traffic coming off the highway. Uh, and their discussion of the intersection mitigation strategies indicates that they recognize the risk at this intersection and agree that measures should be considered to mitigate potential traffic hazards now or in the future. A third point uh, was the chip, the trip generations or the transportation forecasts. Uh, Text Dot agreed with Mr. Stone on the number of trips generated for the proposed facility and Text Dot indicated that in this instance, a right, a right turn lane may be required when trips generated exceed 50 vehicles per hour. Um, Mr. Stone calculated 37 vehicles per hour is going to be the demand on the property uh, during peak hours. And all this begs the question, if 4812 gets developed and a joint use driveway is used to service both 4800 and 4812, would it trigger the need for a right turn lane and future um, uses of the road to be uh, investigated further? Uh, one other small point with regards to the information that was raised this evening. Uh, if the FLUM or the Future Land Use Map was generated in 1995, uh, the the Future Land Use Map was made before a highway was constructed. Um, I would recommend reviewing the historical imagery on Google Earth to confirm this point, but from what I see, it looks like that land use map was made at a time uh, whenever the highway isn't in its current form. I really appreciate everyone's time. I know you guys are all busy people and I I'm really happy for the opportunity to voice my concerns here. I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you. And um, in the event that council doesn't take action tonight and instead they ask for additional information, I would like to put at the top of that list that I do want to know when the Future Land Use Map was changed with regard to both of these properties. And I'd like to have the specific uh, date that both zoning and council took action to make that change. I just feel like that would make for a more complete uh, historical record of what we're reviewing. Kenneth Batucci? Kenneth, it looks like you are self-muted. If you unmute, you have the floor. Kenneth, it looks like you are self-muted. If you unmute, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry if it takes so long in that. I'll try to keep this as short as possible. I'm a president of the Bartonview Neighborhood. Been here since 1979. I'm well aware, as is everyone here, of the difficulty with access or exit on Sterns Road. And either way, you're likely to get creamed by people coming off of 290. And we do have a statement by the developer that TechDOT don't care about the crossover to get into Sterns. It's very unfortunate. It probably is the truth. Because by God, they do all the time. And you're lucky not to get a pocketful of fenders out of them. Folks, certainly, the land needs to be developed at some point. Certainly, there needs to be some hookup with the neighbor. And certainly, the exit and egress into that prop, those two properties, has to be as far down the access road as possible. Otherwise, there's just no way in blazes that any of what's being proffered here as information and stuff from engineers and stuff from TechDOT is anything but a shell game. Till that's squared away, certainly, you know, with the requirement there be nothing on Sterns, but just to be safe, say no. Thank you. Good day. I'm done.
Thank you. Renee Larson?
Unmute myself. Okay. Did that work? Can you hear me?
Yes, that worked. We can hear you.
Thank you. I oppose the development of Bartonview Neighborhood. And the development in Bartonview Neighborhood represents my interest. I have my biggest concerns to share, and it's short. My biggest concerns are related to the neighborhood exiting onto 290 access road. When the Austin Fire Marshal approached us, our neighborhood, a year and a half ago, prior to COVID, which now has more residents at home, with a simulation of what will happen, and as they said, quote, "Not if, but when", we have a fire, since we are surrounded three sides of green belt and watershed property around our neighborhood, that we are going to have a problem getting people out. And it didn't sound like everybody would get out based on that simulation. And that visual on that table that they set up and demonstrated is seared into my mind, and I can't get rid of it. So the, what they said is, is as we know, the cars would not all be able to get out on time. Duttmar is dedicated to the nursing home, which Jean mentioned earlier, which is true. That leaves us Sterns. We already have a problem. Weekday traffic hours, especially in the evening, and especially winter, from Thanksgiving through New Year's, it is backed up, and the average is sitting there for 10 to 15 minutes, not moving in the right lane. You can't even get over to a left lane. You're stuck. And we had our own emergency. My husband has an incurable cancer. We've had eight emergency room trips to go to in the evening once the doctor's offices are closed, where his bladder is full and going to explode. It's a life or death situation. I'm driving, and one of those times already, we were stuck in the right lane, sat there for 10 to 15 minutes. Had it been longer, because there would be more cars, and sometimes there is, he wouldn't have made it. And that's, I had to sit. He could not, he wanted to get out of the car because he was in so much pain. But he can't get out on the street. There was nothing to do but sit in the car and try to calm him. Hold on, hold on. I'm going to get you to the ER. So I'm already worried about exiting our neighborhood based on what we've had. He has, you know, we could have this happen again. It could be a child. It could be people from the nursing home, emergencies. I mean, we have a neighborhood of several elderly, and I am, and small children. And we're all home more now with COVID. I am terrified of that situation right there. That is why I oppose this. Thank you for giving me the time to share. I'm done.
Thank you. Jane Weber?
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And thank you, Mayor Cardona, and your team for helping me wrap my head around this super complicated issue. My hat is off to all of you. What I want to say really is to speak to the issue of precedent. We heard that this has been going on since 1995, when the Future Land Use said that this should be commercial. What that tells me is that for a quarter of a century, we've had folks try and fail to get this property rezoned. And the reason why they failed? It is not viable. It is not sustainable. And I would like to remind the council, you have that 10 criteria sitting there in front of you. Please review it and ask yourselves, does this adhere to the criteria? I personally did not see anything in Mr. Levy's presentation that sets him apart from all of the previous folks that had come before him. What I have heard is more issues to be concerned about. In particular, Victoria Haas, who he submitted as part of support for his zoning change, in her letter said that it's safer for this property to be, this property to be zoned commercial, because for residential, it's not safe. And you can look, it's point number five in her memo. And my question is, help me understand, how would it be safer for commercial use, which is higher density use, if it's not safe for residential use? So please, throw this out. This is a bad idea. Just focus on your ultimate mission as the city council, which is the concern for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Sunset Valley and the neighboring city of Austin. Thank you, city council and mayor.
Thank you. Carl, you have the floor?
Good evening. Let me discuss soon. Carl Pearson at 3204 Cupid Drive, from the neighborhood's to me. Most of what we're talking about has already been addressed. I'm not going to rehash everything, but I can perhaps put in a little bit of clarity with hearsay that's happened tonight. My hearsay with Ms. Angeli. I have known her for many years. We just spoke the other day. She said she is adamantly opposed to this development. So anybody that says they're for it, you must figure out the problem. Hearsay with regards to where the curb cut is. I spoke to Scott Cunningham, the engineer, after the sign-off was released. He said clearly 4800 was the current intended use for getting into that property. And when that happens, even if it doesn't, you know, how is Ms. Angeli going to get in and out of her house? That's just not very good. The fire thing, nobody, this is a real problem. The reason we would have so much, so big a trouble exiting the neighborhood is because AFD is going to close off Duttmar, our only other egress, thanks to the Montecristo being evacuated. We don't need another 50 cars dumping on Sterns. And really, we shouldn't have commercial property, you know, commercial traffic on Sterns anyway. I am in favor of this development, just not today. I think the best thing to do is everybody just, as Jane just said, it's sad, empty for a long time. Wait it out. Wait till the, wait till 4812 becomes available. Let the properties combine. You can have a larger footprint. You can make more money. You can use 4812's curb cut, which, by the way, TechDOT would mandate being improved, nothing bigger, once 4812 would be commercial. That has even been talked about. It's just not, still not a good fit. Nothing's really changed this time around, except for 4812. And I thank you for taking the time to share my concerns.
Thank you, Carl. Is there any other people who would like to speak during public comments? If you would please raise your hand. And while I'm giving people an opportunity to raise their hand, I wanted to take a minute to say I did speak to council member Kitchen, who's the City of Austin representative for South Austin. So technically, she represents the portion of the Bartonview Neighborhood that's not in Sunset Valley. She admitted that she didn't know the history or the details. And soon into our conversation, she admitted that it was clear that I had a longer history with the issues, not just as the mayor and a resident, but also as somebody who'd been a recent commercial landowner on that strip. But I did reiterate to her that I would make sure that it was known tonight that she called me on behalf of her constituents to express concern based on safety, ingress egress of traffic, the wildfire issue. And I gave her my commitment, which matches what I've already said tonight, which is I feel strongly that there should not be any commercial traffic onto Sterns Lane. And part of that is because my fear is that in the future, City of Austin will, with barely more than a blink, give additional access to what is now the Sands Motel and whatever future development may occur there. Cleo, you have the floor? Cleo, if you unmute, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I thought it was unmuted. My name is Cleo Patricic, and my husband and I live on 3214 Cupid Drive. It's the very last street. My backyard is the Barn Creek Green Belt. And I am a part of the fire wise committee here in our neighborhood. I also filmed a video with the fire marshal and safety officials, and we walked our neighborhood. And it was out of the entire city of Austin. Ours was like ranked either in the top one or two of the most highest risk of a wildfire happening in the country compared. The only other wildfire risk compared to us is California. There's been studies about this, and also obviously, the statesman has wrote that it's not if, but when we get a wildfire here in Austin, Texas. So my biggest concern is obviously the fire safety. I have a six-year-old little boy who has special needs. And since COVID, our whole neighborhood uses our neighborhood as our, as a place to be able to relax and get out of our house. We do, we do not have a neighborhood park in our, in our, in our neighborhood. And we also do not have sidewalks. All we have are streets to walk. And I see families caravanning through here, and I'm happy to see them, but I fear for their safety already with the traffic when it gets backed up on 290. And people are thinking that there's a cut through to, to, to make it faster to get out of the, the, like my fellow neighbor mentioned, how you can wait 15 minutes on the service road train to get onto the different parts of, to get out of the neighborhood. I oppose this change. Our neighborhood would be greatly affected by the use of Sterns Lane and should not be shared with a 15,000 square foot facility with the 50, 30 to 50 car space parking lot. Barnview neighborhood, which includes Sunset Valley homeowners. There are two roads to the neighborhood of about 135 homes. This puts a strain on our neighborhood. The current situation being surrounded by so much green belt land and watershed property makes us extremely vulnerable to fires and have been warned by ours, Fire Marshal several occasions that it will be very difficult for all of us to get out of here safely. That is of great concern for us. It's quite alarming, and I would really appreciate if you guys haven't walked back here all the way to where we are and, or even talked to the fire marshal and say it's within minutes that our whole neighborhood is burned down. The way that the sand table that he did, I even have it on a video if you want me to send you the YouTube link to show how quickly the fire will move through our neighborhood. So this is extremely serious, beyond anything else. Council members and mayor, I urge you to think of our safety and increasing the density and the amount of commercial traffic into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so the, I heard a mention of 15,000 square feet. And just to be clear, that may be the maximum allowed under TechDOT's interpretation of the commercial use. But our impervious cover restrictions based on the aquifer protection and our code would limit that significantly. And I think the developer said it's somewhere closer to 4,000 square feet. And with that, Terry, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate the time to talk tonight. I really enjoyed listening to my neighbors. We've been meeting about this. There are a lot of us who have been talking. The neighborhood association's done a great job of representing us. I share the concerns about fire and the exits. I am opposed to the application that was approved by the zoning commission, which allowed one-way traffic onto Sterns Lane. I have to say that I support the remarks of Mayor Cardona in regard to if there is no traffic onto Sterns Lane, then let me speak to that. However, in order for that, for us to be assured of that, there needs to be a legal restriction, if the council chooses to approve, that basically forbids any traffic onto Sterns Lane. So no matter what TechDOT does, we are protected from additional traffic onto Sterns Lane because of the fire issues, the traffic issues, all those issues. Since I moved in, I'm at 4500 Sterns Lane. I moved to Sunset Valley in 91. Since then, there have been, I think, three previous applications for development of that property. Each and every one of them wanted to put the traffic onto Sterns Lane and increase impervious cover and uses that weren't compatible with the neighborhood. And one time, there was an attempt to raise it the neighborhood above neighborhood commercials. Of the developers I've seen so far, Aaron's profile's the best in regard to green builder, it's going to protect impervious cover, willingness to work with the neighborhood and the city. Now, we're not anti-development, but we are anti our safety and health being affected by a neighborhood going at the entrance of what is, will be a primary entrance in the case of a fire to our neighborhood. So if the council, there, there've been a lot of issues about this, and the issues that are brought up from our point of view, and in our opinion, are true issues. But it boils down to, for, for me, the traffic. No traffic on Sterns Lane and 18% impervious cover. And so that is what I, so I asked the council to not approve what the zoning commission recommended to you. And if you do choose to approve development, development at 4800, to not allow any traffic onto Sterns Lane in, in a legal way, so that we are sure that that's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Last call for public comments. And I'm going to wait just a second because I thought, Mr. Locock, I have unmuted you. It looked like I saw your hand pop up and then go down. If you'd like to speak, you do have the floor. Mr. Locock, you do have the floor. Hi, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. My apology. Hello, Mayor, Council. Like to address a couple of issues that's come up. One, I did not know that a group of people went to see mother. So, and I find that very disturbing. A month ago, at the zoning commission, I asked that no one go to see an 89-year-old woman before, without coming to me, because I do have the right to speak on her behalf. I also indicated that shortly after that visit of one or two people, I called her, and she first did not remember signing anything. And then she did remember signing the letter, which was presented to her, so she did not generate that letter. And she indicated to me directly, and almost, I quote, "I signed it because I didn't want, I just wanted to make them happy." So those people that went today or yesterday, I have a feeling she, she felt pressure. At 89, her memory is not exactly At 89, her memory is not exactly what it should be, and so she's having troubles. And it troubles me that people would go to see her in this state, especially when I said pointedly in the zoning committee, "Approach me, not her. Please leave her alone to this." And I've also stated many times that she will not approve a driveway, so that is not news. I've been saying that. Mr. Levy is aware of that. The zoning committee and commission has also very aware of that. So those are not new. We are willing to work with Mr. Levy, and that's been very clear from the beginning because he does have her concern. The... From the very beginning, I think it was late January when we first began, he said he would set up barriers, natural barriers, so that she could not see the building. Also, he was building on the front end of the property away from the house. She finds comfort in the back of her house looking at that. She understands that this property will be developed at some point. And with his design, his firm's commitment to the environment and to her and her property and her concerns, she's in support of it. Yes, she had preferred that it stays vacant, but quite honestly, she is a realist, and she understands that it's going to be developed at some point. If it's going to be developed in her lifetime, she would prefer to have a say in who develops this. We are willing to have a shared drive, if and only if the 4,812 is developed in any way, whether it's to improve single-family residents or to a commercial property. At this point, we don't have any plans to develop it. I am, at this point, advocating for mother, family, and also for my younger brother's children, who also will be part of the inheritance of the house. So I am advocating also for family, not for me. I have no personal take on this, you know, or consideration. It is all for family. So if we can have a commercial development that takes into the family's concern, we are for it. I don't know what else to say besides that, except we appreciate Mr. Levy and his company and what they have been trying to do. Also appreciate all the neighbors. I've walked the streets of Sterns, and also the neighborhoods have photographs and enjoyed it. And so I understand the needs of the people. I also live in wildfire area, earthquake area, and I understand the need for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, at this time, I do need a motion and a second as it is 9 o'clock, so I need a motion. Councilmembers, if somebody could please raise their hand if you're amenable to us extending past 9:00 p.m. Councilmember Medicus? Or Councilmember Rees? I hear both Councilmember Rees and Councilmember Medicus.
Motion to continue the meeting.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. This will allow us to extend up to, but not beyond, 10:00 p.m. If you would please... We have two ayes from Councilmember Medicus and Councilmember Rees. Sylvia, if you would please let me know the votes of the other councilmembers so that it's on the audible record.
Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Rosa Garden, yes. Councilmember Ellett, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. I'm missing Councilmember Rees.
Yes, sorry, I said...
Thank you. And Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm going to lower your hand because I think it was up based on that motion and action. But if I'm wrong and you're wanting to speak during the hearing before we close it out, if you would please raise your hand again. And I see we have two additional speakers. I'm going to allow Aaron Levy to go first because I'm assuming he might have a correction or comment to something said up to this point. Aaron, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll be very quick. Just to address a couple of things that were said. In reference to the ability of development of square footage, yes, per zoning, it's 15,000 feet. And I just want to be clear, I did not say that it's limited to 4,000. I said, "Due to the impervious coverage limitation, we won't get to the 15,000." And that does impact the ability of cars versus square footage is kind of this fine line in how they work against each other. I can't really say what that number is. I can say from the calculation of where we're at, we're in like the 13,000 and change range. Also, I want to be clear, it was brought up a question or questioning of the flum that was adopted in 1995. I just want to reiterate what was stated by staff in the beginning is that it's been adopted in through new iterations and maintained as that as late as 2011. There was comment to this TIA being theoretical, and I just want to be clear again. The purpose of the TIA is for site capture and design of traffic flow to and from the site for mitigation of safety concern. All these concerns around the exit ramp and 290 access going all the way down to Brody Lane is beyond scope of our development. So that does not make our analysis theoretical. I just want to be clear. Also, there was a comment to there's no neighborhood park. And as I showed in my site plan, we're trying to create amenity for the neighborhood to create a park space and a walking trail on our private property because there is no park in the neighborhood. Somebody made comment to the memo provided by Victoria Haas on behalf of Thrower Design in relation to item number five, stating that this development would be safer than current use. Yes, we do believe that proper use of commercial frontage, creating a buffer from a major highway to residential is a safer use. There was comment that TechDOT does not care or have concern around the people cutting over from the exit ramp. I think that was a misinterpretation of comment that I made. In a conference call, it was very clear that people make this move, residents of the neighborhood make this move. TechDOT was just stating that all the mitigation options that have been brought forward, both by TechDOT and the traffic engineer, were determined to be unsafe because of the speed of the exit ramp. And a concrete barrier would cause a car to actually flip over at that speed, is what they said. Delineators are a nuisance because there are long-term maintenance costs on TechDOT because people will drive over them regardless. I just, again, I just want to reiterate because a lot of the comments, as we expected, are to the items that I was trying to address in my presentation. I agree. I agree with no access to Sterns, if that's something that we're able to do. And as Terry has pointed out and other neighbors have pointed out, that I'm making the concerted efforts. So I just want to be clear in that. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ingrid Morton, you have the floor. Ingrid, did you want to speak? If so, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. My name's Ingrid Morton. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. My name is Ingrid Morton, and I am a resident at 3204 Cupid Drive. And I am the current chairperson of the Barton View Neighborhood Association, and therefore am the one responsible for sending out the surveys for neighbor comments that you received probably about 60 copies of. And I just wanted to let you all know that Ms. Angely called me this morning and asked if I could come by her home to pick up her comment on this survey. I did not approach her. I gave her a survey, just as I did every other resident in Barton View and Sunset Valley. And I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Any additional public comments?
Unmuted.
Mayor, I wanted to clarify the 60 comments received. We have received 14 written comments from folks who state their address. So if there are additional, we have not received them.
Well, so, and I can clarify on that because I may have... I certainly devoted my entire day to this. And so for me, I received... Last time I checked, I believe there were 21 Open Gov comments. There was then the additional, I think it's the letter that Ingrid just mentioned, and I referenced it earlier. And it looks like it was a form letter that was created that I would imagine the spirit of it was. We want as many people to sign on rather than doing it petition-style. They did a form letter and said, "If you agree with this letter, please sign it." And so for that, I lost count. I mean, at one point, I was up to 70. But again, I'm not doing... I don't have an assistance that helps me to confirm names, to confirm addresses. I think it suffice to say, and I think the city attorney would agree, we've had enough comments, but especially in a town the size of Sunset Valley, without a doubt, I don't think there's any council members that would disagree. We've had enough input from the community to understand the concerns being ingress egress, traffic, public safety, which includes both the traffic aspect, the wildfire evacuation access. Certainly, if there's a council member that doesn't agree with that, raise your hand. But my count was a very high count if you count both the Open Gov comments that will become part of the permanent record, things that were submitted to either council or city hall via email. And then this scan that I believe may have come in from Carl, where he coupled all of those letters, and that one, I think, had somewhere in the range of 50. And I was trying to go through and cross-connect. There were some people who submitted one, two, or three times, so there is some repetitiveness in there. But again, it's certainly more than 30, less than 100. Councilmember Gonzalez, did you have something you wanted to add before we close the hearing?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to, in terms of information, get from the city attorney what potential bind we let ourselves in. So let's, for the sake of argument, say that we successfully decide to block off all traffic on Sterns from this development and that that's part of the agreement that we move forward on. But then, TechDOT doesn't... And then he buys the property, right? Because that's the thing. It's like he's buying it if this goes through. That's my understanding. And so then he's stuck with his property. And this is my concern as a council member moving forward. And then we're sort of stuck in the variance thing where he has no use for this property unless we open up Sterns. And so that's the bind I don't want us in because that's why I'm concerned about the application process. Because if we had a proper application process, all these boxes would be checked, right? Where TechDOT has already signed off on this, where it's okay to move forward. And I don't feel like we've met all that criteria yet. So what I don't want to have happen is the bind that we become needing to do a variance to let this guy have use of his property. And so I want that to be addressed by the attorney. But thank you.
This is Roxy Stevens. Now, the... The city council has the authority, based on that 10 criteria, to add a condition to the recommendation of the zoning commission. And that is within the discretion of the council upon, you know, whatever they evaluate, those 10 criteria to be as applied to this proposed zoning change. Now, and ultimately, there's a finality in that action that, you know, if there is a vote that this recommendation is accepted with that condition, that there not be any ingress or egress on Sterns Road, that's a final decision pursuant to our land development code from the city council. Now, ultimately, it does... And I believe Mr. Levy said that it's possible he's going to have to talk to TechDOT, but he understands that that's the big concern, and that's what needs to be addressed. So the council has the authority and the ability and discretion under the law to issue that, to accept that recommendation with that condition. If later on, you know, a variance is required, I mean, you have to look at it under that process with those facts as it stands. I can't surmise what that might be at this point. But you do have the discretion to say, "This is why we think this will be good, but with this condition." And that's the authority given to you by the code and the Texas law. And I hope that answers your question.
Not quite. I'm just going to sort of say this, and it may just be a statement. This is why I object to the process as it's been done. And I've objected to process before, and I've had a similar type of objection. If we were following process exactly, we wouldn't be in this bind. And that's kind of why I'm concerned that it's even here before us because of the potential for a variance to come back and kind-hearted council people to possibly overturn it. And that's my concern about this. What I would like to have seen is a joint application. That was really a joint application because that would have checked off a box. What I would like to have seen was a TechDOT support that was actually a TechDOT support. Without those two things, it puts this at risk. And so where we could be in a bind where he moves forward and buys the property and then doesn't have TechDOT approval, and then it comes back to us. And that's my concern as a council member going forward and why I think it's really, really important that we do our applications properly and because it would protect us from this situation. So that's my two cents.
Councilmember Gonzalez, is there anything that you want Roxy to be responsive to before I go to the next speaker?
Unless she sees something besides my statement, which is maybe a statement because it's where we are, and just as a caution to staff that we don't get here again.
Helen Bessie, you have the floor.
Thank you. Helen Bessie, 795 Oakdale Drive. I lost the connection when Terry was speaking, but I think I heard him say something to the effect of, "Would it be possible to put a deed restriction on the property so that the exit driveway egress would be, would have to be given up when the other property develops?" I don't know how that would work. I don't know. My understanding is that deed restrictions have to be overturned by a court order. I could be totally wrong on that, but at least it's something to think about. If the developer is really serious about, yes, he would consider giving up the use of that driveway, then would he be willing to deed restrict it so that that would have to happen? That's one question, our suggestion. The second is that I also agree with Melissa. It's like we, as a council, we as a city, tend to move forward very quickly when developers are trying to develop, and we get ourselves into a bind that we have to come back and then require variances and whatnot. And then the public support is drifted off or the public disapproval is drifted off and councils change. And it just doesn't seem like that's fair to either the developer or to the City of Sunset Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medicus?
Did you call me, Mayor? I heard Councilmember, and that was all I heard.
I did. I'm sorry. Yes. Councilmember Medicus, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for... Well, one specifically for Roxy. As Mayor mentioned earlier, there would... Potentially, what she would be looking for is restrictive covenants or conditions that no development, no egress or ingress happened on Sterns Lane in perpetuity. Is that... Is that something that council can actually do and then be done with this for the foreseeable future? So we're not back here again?
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the condition placed on the approval of a zoning change. And the zoning change can only happen if this condition is met.
Okay. And then my second question is, are we going to be going through the ten criteria in this public hearing? Or is that going to happen in the next item? Or are we going to go through that on record at all?
Karen, I can, or sorry, Councilmember Medicus, my answer to that, and then Roxy can differ. So, and this is important to cover. The zoning commission, we can accept their recommendation with a majority vote of council. We can accept it with additional conditions, such as the one we've discussed about restricting any use of any access to Sterns Lane now or in the future as any part of the development. That can be done with a majority. If council wants to oppose the recommendation, that has to be done with a supermajority. And if we were to do that, it would be in the next item, not this one, because it would be connected to action, which is not on this item. And then Roxy, I don't know if it's required that we go through those ten items, but I would imagine either way, yes, Councilmember Medicus, the councilmembers would go through those items. Roxy, what would you want to add to that?
What I would like to add, number first, on the ten items, a lot of memo and statement from the developer, Mr. Levy, was submitted to the zoning commission and subsequently to the city council and the supporting documents addressing those ten criteria. And although it's not required, the ten criteria are what the city council members should use to make their evaluation on whatever action they're going to do with this particular item. Of note, Mayor, I'm, it is, I need to point out that if there was a certain number of written protests filed, no matter what the action, it would require a supermajority. And from what I'm hearing, you say a little bit earlier was that you received a lot of written, written letters in opposition, which would be in protest. So I need to get with the city administrator and with the assistant, and calculate that, but more than likely, it may be a supermajority for any kind of action, which would be three-fourths of the members, all members of city council, not the ones who are present, but all members, which would then require a vote of four out of five.
And so you're saying that supermajority is required regardless, just as our normal procedure, if we were to oppose the recommendation? But you're saying because of the number of write-ins, which certainly exceeded fifty, most of those are from the Barton Street neighborhood, so technically, they're City of Austin. I don't know if that makes any sort of a difference in the legality of that. But what you're saying is that with those...
The way that the land development code for City of Sunset Valley is written, and it's in compliance with the Texas state law, is that if at least twenty percent of the owners of the property within two hundred feet of the specific affected property have filed a written protest, then it would require a favorable vote of the three-fourths of the members of the city council, which is four out of five.
So it's twenty percent or more of those who live within two hundred feet of the affected area? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, of the affected property.
Okay. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say we did have that. So council, I would just advise when we get to the next item, if you are going to take action, I would say we would be looking for a supermajority. And if we didn't have that, it would potentially require the city attorney to do that additional administrative research if it was a vote of less than four council members. Karen, sorry, Councilmember Medicus, did you have additional questions that you wanted to ask of Roxy or others?
Yes, I just had one more item, and that was with what Councilmember Gonzalez brought up about Text Dot and the curb cut off of two ninety, and the developers' ability to utilize that. I mean, the onus for, I would think that, Erin, you would be really nailing down that authority from Text Dot before you would move forward with any kind of purchase or development of this property. So the onus would be on you to, to make sure that that's taken care of. That's it, that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. And Erin, would you raise your hand, so I don't have to go search through the people to find you, so that you can be, thank you. Would you mind, I know you said it earlier, but would you be responsive to that in the context that Councilmember Medicus just reiterated it?
Yes, I'd be more than willing to pursue the conversation with Text Dot in order to gain acceptance for two-way access on two ninety.
Thank you, and this is where I would, oh.
I apologize, but I do want to be clear that he did state in his letter, "This traffic study is approved along with planned mitigation." So I just want to be clear, they did actually approve. And I see you're doing a little map verification, but I'm wondering how you, as council, intend to verify the residents of the twenty percent that we're talking about within two hundred feet? Because you can really see that it's, we're, and I'll leave that to you, my apologies.
Yeah. And I think that would actually only come into play if we're looking to approve, approve the recommendation. And so I think we would just need to get further down the line before we worry about how we calculate that. Councilmembers, are there any additional questions or comments before we close the hearing? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
So how could we make a condition that there cannot be any ingress or egress off of Sterns Lane, which is a city road owned by the City of Austin?
Roxy, would you, and I know we've covered this a few times, but this is, please, tell us again. And I, Roxy, I want to make sure that the councilmembers know how to do that, so that if they are wanting to form a motion of some sort in the next item, they know exactly what wording you would need to give the assurance that it's absolute.
Yeah, can you repeat the original question, councilmember?
How can we prevent ingress and egress off of Sterns Lane when Sterns Lane is a city road by, managed and taken care of by Austin, the City of Austin?
The only way that we can do that is with regard to the property and the parcels of land that are within our jurisdiction, which is on the side that this subject property is on. And the only way we can do that is with conditions placed upon any kind of zoning changes or amendments, such as we're doing now, and/or development agreements once they start going through the building permits and processes and the actual development process. The City of Sunset Valley cannot place any kind of conditions or restrictions on the other side of Sterns Lane. Like we discussed earlier, that is all subject to the jurisdiction of the City of Austin. And our only way to state anything is, would be to participate in public comment and write protests and et cetera, if there was anything with, on the City of Austin's side that would put traffic onto Sterns Lane. But we're limited to what we're doing right now with the zoning and development on our, on the pieces of property that are within the City of Sunset Valley. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I guess the best you can, yes. Rudy, maybe I can simplify. We would not allow a building permit. We wouldn't allow a building permit if the site plan came in and shut a driveway off of Sterns.
Got it. Thank you.
And along those lines, I would also, as I'm sort of advocating on behalf of the residents, and I'm remembering, Erin, this is certainly, you weren't here to experience this, but on Country White, which is a similar but different road, where we have ETJ homes, and we had a commercial development on a property that fronts Brody Lane, used to be residential, two residential lots, very different, but also lots of similarities. I will forever be the evil queen in Sunset Valley, that the two, the developer, husband and wife developer forever, I'm certain, hate me for advocating for those residents. I do think it is important for council to look at our future land use map and to look at the reality of two ninety. Everything on that frontage road is commercial. Miss Angelique's property, in the future, it's going to make absolutely no sense for somebody to want to build a house there. So regardless of what we do tonight, at some point in the future, her property, as her family has stated tonight, it will eventually become something commercial, because it is completely landlocked with only one driveway, which is onto two ninety. That's not going to be an appealing residential lot. But I want to make sure that we don't create a situation where we allow something onto Sterns Lane, which then creates an opportunity, whoever does come in, to redevelop the Sands Motel in the future. We're just making it that much harder for the residents in that community, because they can say, "Well, Sunset Valley allowed it across the street, therefore, you should certainly allow it." Where if we were to restrict it, the opposite occurs. It gives the community a precedent to go to Text Dot and City of Austin in the future and say, "Look, we've already done this battle with Sunset Valley, they disallowed it, you should do the same." And with that, councilmembers, if there's anybody else who wants to speak, otherwise, I'm going to close the hearing. We are closing the hearing at nine twenty-nine. That brings us now to our next item, which is item number seven. Consider approval of a request for a zoning change at forty-eight hundred US Highway two ninety west from single-family residential to neighborhood office with council deliberation and action. So at this point, we will open with the opportunity for councilmembers to ask additional questions, to deliberate, or to entertain a motion for consideration. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the zoning commission to grant a change to zoning for forty-eight hundred US two ninety west from single-family to neighborhood office.
And is your motion to accept it as recommended, or with any additional restrictions?
Motion to accept as presented by the zoning commission, I would be open to other discussions about the single point of ingress and exit.
Thank you. So to start with, we have a clean motion, which is to approve the recommendation as presented in item number seven. That creates a clean motion. Do we have a second to open it for discussion? Councilmember Rosen Garden, if you unmute yourself, you can let me know, or you are second?
Second, with a friendly amendment.
We have a second, so we now have a motion on the floor, and considered by the motion maker. Both of you have the floor.
Muted.
I would like to add that there'd be no egress and ingress on Sterns Lane.
Does the motion maker accept that amendment to the motion?
Yes, I do.
So now we have a motion and a second to consider approval as recommended from the zoning commission with the restriction that there be no ingress egress from Sterns Lane. And on that, I would definitely want to ensure that, even though Roxy has done it a few times this evening, that we re-review what that is, when it happens, how it's enforced, and if it's something that comes back to council or not. So Roxy, at any point, is there anything that needs to be added, addition, to make it clear before we discuss it further, take action?
No, I believe that it's clear enough that that is a condition. At least, just add the wording that, with a condition of no ingress or egress to Sterns Road.
And the motion maker in the second, accept that wording specification from the city attorney?
I do.
Motion maker in second, do either of you have any discussion or commentary before I open it to additional councilmembers who want to speak, and then open it for public comment?
No.
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, that the condition be no ingress or egress onto Sterns Lane in perpetuity.
Thank you. City, Roxy, is, I agree, I feel more comfortable with in perpetuity. Does that wording change what you're drawing up?
No, it does not.
It doesn't hurt to add it?
It does not.
Motion maker in second, would you accept that into your motion?
Madam, may I ask a council question on that? What does that mean, and how do we live up to that in perpetuity? Could a future council come in and undo that?
All you need is majority vote, so I would say the answer is yes.
Actually, this is Roxy Stevens.
Unmuted.
The council's decision is final, but it does not bind future council. So one of the things, and I think I may have discussed this earlier, one of the things that we can do on that condition is that we can propose an agreement with the property owner and the developer on this condition that we, or condition that we enter an agreement that we establish a contractual restrictive covenant that runs with the land. That's the way that...
Would that achieve the same effect?
It, I believe that you would want to, number one, make the condition that there's no ingress or egress for the zoning change, and a second condition that the, that we go into an agreement, an enforceable contract between the city, the property owner, the developer, if they're still different people at that point, that we agree to it as a restrictive covenant that runs with the land, and make it enforceable under an agreement.
Councilmember Medicus, if you would unmute everything Roxy just said. For me, as an attorney, is much better language than just in perpetuity.
I agree. I just don't want to...
The motion maker?
You know, we've been through this, like you said, through multiple applications over time. And I think we need to just put this issue to bed once and for all, so that the neighborhood doesn't have to continually worry about access onto Sterns Lane from any property that we have control over.
Does the motion maker in the second accept the city attorney's language, which is contractual agreement that runs with the land?
I do.
Yes.
Roxy, I have a proceed, oh, yes? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Garden says yes.
Roxy, if we were to do this, part of what I've seen happen in our city is that staff forgets or loses things. Would this be filed with Travis County? Would this be filed with Text Dot? What other plate, what other entities would have knowledge of this to cloud title in the event that it does change hands in the future?
Uh, that is...
But we're not just relying on city staff?
Right, that's something that we have to figure out, make sure that it's recorded along with the deed, any kind of deed that runs with the land. Because the agreement is for a restrictive covenant to run with the land, so we will have to follow a process that would, it would get officially recorded so that it's on the public record.
With that, councilmembers, do we have additional commentary before I open it for public statement? Councilmembers, please raise your hands now. And with that, is there any additional public comment on this item before council takes action? But I feel you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
We sure can.
So I have a question about the hundred-foot landscaped setback with forty-eight twelve, and if there's going to be any resolution of that? Because it appears that the... Because it appears that the property is not viable and that the conceptual site plan that is submitted at this time is in conflict with that setback requirement. So I'm confused how council could move forward to accept the zoning case when it doesn't meet all 10 criteria in the land development code.
Roxy, I do believe that's it. Thank you. Roxy, that's a question for you.
Oh, there we go. I apologize. I wasn't able to unmute. So I apologize. The question was whether it falls under meets criteria?
The question is if there's a 100-foot setback requirement that can't occur while the adjacent 4812 is still zoned, single-family, if that, even though we've covered it can be zoned, commercial, even if the use is residential, but it has to actually be zoned, commercial, in order to eliminate that 100-foot setback, are we permitted to approve the zoning change tonight for 4800? Or do we have to require that 4812 be approved first before we consider 4800?
So that implicates two different processes, but you're right. I think one of the criteria, I'm looking through them right now, it's, I think it's three. The proposed classification will allow uses that are reasonable, not incompatible with surrounding properties, and that any minor incompatible effect of uses to be allowed will be adequately mitigated. I think...
Is it adequate to say that mitigation is that a building permit wouldn't be granted until such time?
Unmuted.
If the city is rezoned?
That's correct. This is just with the zoning change. This isn't the actual development. So that would be addressed in the building permit process. And that's where it would be resolved. And I believe that Mr. Levy has already stated that he was looking to rezone the other one before they start development. So that would be the mitigation factor under that criteria. And again, these 10 criteria are at the discretion of the council. So it's at the discretion as to whether they believe that it is, fulfills those criteria. And I believe that they have talked about mitigation in regards to that setback and what they plan on doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I forgot what I was going to ask.
I'll go to the next person and come back to you. How about that?
Okay.
Okay. Terry Cowan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to respectfully ask the council to go forward with the decision with the absolute protections built in for the community, for our neighborhood, that there will be no traffic on Sterns Lane.
Is that the end of your comment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I didn't want to mute you if you weren't done. Okay. Councilmember Rosen Garden, I'm coming back to you.
It basically was, why didn't we see 4812 tonight? Well, we could have approved neighborhood commercial on 4812, then 4800 right after that. That way it would have been done. But here we are, concerned about why we're doing this with a residence next to it. So why did it come this way in this process versus presenting 4812 first?
Forty-eight...
I will let Sylvia speak to that.
This is Matt.
Oh, Matt, sorry, I didn't recognize your voice. Yes.
Sorry. Can I speak?
Yes.
I was just going to answer. So Rudy, or excuse me, Councilmember Rosen Garden, the 4812 and 4800 were presented to zoning the same time, multiple occasions. The last zoning meeting, July 1st, the public hearings had already been held for zoning. They had not been held for council, so they were already advertised. The public hearings for both 4800 and 4812 were advertised to be held tonight. However, at the zoning commission meeting on the first, 4812 was tabled. The zoning commission, it was determined that the application wasn't complete. There needed to be a conceptual site plan submitted. So that is why they were originally intended to be heard tonight, but we had already advertised for the public hearing for tonight. So we had to have the one for 4800 tonight because it was advertised as such. But 4812 was tabled on July 1st by the zoning commission.
Okay. Question is, how can you present a conceptual plan when there's nobody looking to develop it right now?
Sylvia can answer that, and a conceptual plan is a very, very high level, so...
Yes, a conceptual plan is different than a site plan. And the conceptual plan, and Mr. Locock is on, he can respond. There is no plan to develop Ms. Angelie's property, separate and apart from the shared access with Mr. Levy until such time and Ms. Angelie passes. He didn't want to appear that he was rushing the process for Ms. Angelie to move on. And so his plan was to leave that property alone. A conceptual plan is just that, it's a concept. In other communities, site plans are tied to the development agreement, but that's not how Sunset Valley's code is written. The conceptual plan could change from point to point, and in fact, council could even waive that requirement. So what Ms. Angelie is going, what we're going to see for Ms. Angelie's property is a residential home and a driveway. That's pretty much what I'm suspecting we're going to see in terms of a concept plan for 4812.
And Sylvia, was that the only additional requirement that zoning requested? Was there any other reason that they tabled it or anything else that they requested?
No, that was it.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, does that answer your question? So I can move to the next person, or if not, I'll leave my mic on. Thank you. Aaron Levy?
Again, I'll be very brief. I did show in my presentation the site plan that is going out to the public, the concept for 4812. And we wanted to show it with full capacity of what a neighborhood commercial would yield. And again, just like our property, due to impervious coverage, there's really a limitation on footprint and where the development can actually fit into the property. And if you're, as everyone's looking at this screen right now, the entirety of its development is all within, in front of all of those oak trees and the residents. So the trees are not even touched. And everything sits in that space in front, and you would be unable to develop beyond that just due to impervious coverage. You wouldn't be able to get that far back into the property. But we did provide a site concept as requested by the zoning commission that does show it as commercial, just so you can understand for future use and potential, even though it may be redeveloped with the residents, for all we know. I like stated before, I don't know why somebody would, but there's always a potential. So you have to be prepared for all possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locock.
Yeah, just like Aaron just said, we developed a potential. And so we placed a building, you know, in front of the live oak tree, which I mentioned at the last zoning convention, and I really wish and hope that anybody that, if we were to sell and they were to develop, would keep that live oak tree. Going through, right now, we have no plans of development. As I stated earlier tonight, this is about family. And those family members that are not a part of this conversation tonight, they have a say within there as well. So what I'm doing is all for future, all for family. It's not for me personally. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional council needs before we call a vote? And then I'll do one last call for public comment. Any additional council members that need to be addressed? And I don't see any other, hands up. What else do I see? That your hand is up, so I'm going to give you the floor again, if you could please keep it brief.
Yes, I have a question, and the question has to do with the rights of neighboring landowners to request a formal site plan as opposed to conceptual site plan. And the reason for trying to understand what rights there are along these lines is that, to some extent, the concerns that the neighborhood has are specific to the design. And, you know, we are trying to motivate a solution to the issues that we have with the traffic around and the safety around the neighborhood. And to some extent, that's specific to an actual driveway design. And we'd like to be able to approve something specific and binding as opposed to something that can be switched or changed or irrelevant, essentially. So what rights do we have to ask for that next level of documentation that's more binding?
Thank you. Roxy, that is a question for you. To what extent do the residents Sunset Valley others, or is it dependent on adjacent proximity? What control do they have over the actual specific site plan and development?
It is, it does have a proximity portion of it. I'm trying to find it, get to it really quick on the zoning. If you get me, give me a second to reach where I was. I missed it. Missed it. Let's see. I apologize. I was looking, trying to look for an appendix and I got out of my area. Okay, here they are. Application requirements for amendments initiated by the property owner. And it is section 2.305. C and seven, seven states. A site plan, C, Appendix B, that was the appendix I was trying to get to, may be required by a member of the council or zoning commission and shall be required by the council in such cases for an owner of real property located within 500 feet of the property on which a change in classification is proposed to make such a request. But that is with regard to the application and accompanied by. The code does not state how a written request from somebody or a property located within 500 feet of the property would make such a request. And it doesn't give a timeline as to when, when that request or that requirement would be made. And I don't know if this is, a site plan has been requested before, so I would have to see as to what has been done before to, in order to evaluate the context of that section.
Okay. And then I have a similar but different question that maybe is for Sylvia and/or you or other staff members. Is there any way, if council were to approve the motion tonight and all requirements were met, is there any way to develop this property without coming to council? In other words, is there a way to administratively approve the building permit? I know there's some lots where there's just no chance. There's no chance that it can be developed without some portion of it coming back to council.
This lot could be developed administratively. He's not asking for, he's not asking for a variance at this particular point. This is just a land use. If during any time during the building permit process, he's asking for, whether it's a waiver or an increase in impervious cover or a reduction in parking, anything that is even the most minor variance, our code does not allow for administrative approval. So that would be the time that it would come back to council.
So then I would go back to the question just posed to you, Roxy. If, let's say there's a situation where they're able to administratively move forward and build, meaning this doesn't come back to council again, is there just an easy yes/no answer to, do the adjacent property owners have a right to control the look, the style, or the specifics of how the site is developed?
You're talking as part of the development, that would be, as long as it falls under, within the code, the code is going to speak to that in that administrative process. If there's anything that they're looking to, for a variance in any part of that code, then that's when it would come to the council.
And so if there isn't any sort of a variance that requires it to administratively be forced in front of council, let's say they can submit a clean permit that doesn't deviate in any way from our building code or impervious cover setbacks, et cetera, would the adjacent property owners have any right to intervene to control the look of the development after tonight?
No.
Who did the no come from? Sylvia or Roxy?
It came from Sylvia. Roxy, Roxy can jump in. The only time the, we don't regulate aesthetics in zoning codes, not normally, unless there is an overlay, unless there is a, unless this is being submitted as a planned unit development or unless this is being submitted with a specific set of variances built into the development request, which is really a planned development, right? If he's trying to narrow streets, if he's trying to build smaller lot lines, if he's trying to go higher or more denser, those are things that can be regulated within the code. But without a specific overlay, an overlay could even regulate color. I've had overlays that regulate no vinyl being used. But without a specific overlay or without a specific request for any type of variance within, he's allowed to do what the building code, the adopted building codes allow so long as he can meet the underlying requirements. In any orderly development, the first is zoning, and then it's plating, and then it's building permitting. This property is already platted, so he's got to meet the zoning requirements. If in his submittal for a building permit, he can't meet the setbacks, he can't meet the impervious cover, he can't meet any of that, or if he submits a building plan that has access off of Sterns, we have the ability to deny it.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions from council members? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Mayor, I feel like the person's question hasn't been answered. And so I want to, I want to make sure that the person gets answered. And maybe they have, but I'm just saying I haven't heard it and I have the same question. It can just be a stalling tactic, which is kind of how I hear it being answered, is that there's not a reason to have it. But they do have, the way I read it, both a council member or a property owner has the right to ask for that. I don't know to what purpose, which is what I hear the answer being. But I also don't hear their right to do that being addressed and when that would be in the process. And I just think it's a legitimate question that deserves a legitimate answer. And I don't want to have someone have a legal challenge later because they were denied something. So I'm just trying to, again, dot our process. And I'm, and I heard that during, I heard that during the slight amount of the zoning.
Got it. Roxy, can you answer that? I heard a clear no from Sylvia, but Roxy, could you weigh in again? And then Aaron, you also, your mic is unmuted. If you want, you have your hand up, so if there's something you want to add, please question.
I believe what the question is, is can they, can there be a question to force a more in-depth site plan at this point in the process versus a site plan approval for development? And I just want to be clear, I mean, I understand that not everybody looks at plans, but the amount of development that's been put into this plan, it's no longer conceptual. I mean, this is a schematic design at this point. Obviously, it's going to be modified with the two-way access, if that's the direction this goes. But the numbers don't lie and the inability to overdevelop due to impervious coverage. I just don't understand what the intention is to try to force that into, just for a zoning change.
a zoning change. Uh, obviously, the code is the code, so, uh, the way that it's gonna be designed is gonna adhere to that. I, I, you know, it, it just sounds to me like a tactic to delay this. I just wanna be clear, that's all.
Thank you. Roxy, is there anything you want to add before we call for a vote from the council members? In terms of being responsive to Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Uh, yes, I think, on the application, it, it states on the applic, that, um, let me go back, um, that a, uh, in addition to a conceptual site plan, which is defined by the code in appendix A, a site plan defined by appendix B, uh, may be required by council or, um, shall be required by councils in a case where an owner of the real property located within five hundred feet of the property asks for, um, makes such a request. Like I said, it doesn't, it doesn't identify particularly that process, but the site plan is defined by appendix B, and, um, and if the site plan that has been submitted by Mr. Levy, uh, fulfills all what appendix B of the land development code says, then that could, that would be considered the site plan. I have not done that evaluation, and I have not, again, um, I said, because it's not that process of requesting, it's not outlining, it doesn't say the timing of it, um, I, I would, I would ask to see what has been done before, if it has been done before, to evaluate in what context, uh, this was written. But that's, there is that, that, uh, that right for that to be asked of, and it's defined by exhibit, by exhibit B of the land development code, and if Mr. Levy can show that his, or if he's saying that the site, you know, he's, he, the site plan he's presented is more than conceptual, and if it's evaluated and it fulfills the exhibit B, then, um, then that could be the, considered the site plan.
Thank you, and I'm gonna allow Sylvia or Roxy, if there's anything else you want to add.
I have the site plan requirements up in appendix B. And so if Mr. Levy would, would, um, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but, um, it, it generally, it looks almost like a plat. Um, what Mr. Levy provided is almost appendix B. It, there is going to be a difference now if the council says they do not want access off of Sterns, that would be an item to correct within appendix B. There's no mention as to when it's required. Um, if the council were to require it tonight, then this would have to come back, but, um, that's, that's my input.
Um, this is Roxy Stevens. Uh, the council still has the authority to add whatever conditions, um, it feels that the, um, what, the council has the authority to add, uh, whatever conditions it feels would help fulfill those ten criteria as of right now, whether, whether that site plan is, it has been accepted or presented or not.
So the maker in the second, if they want to take, if they want to require that Mr. Levy provides something more specific than what he already has, they could. And I would agree, after looking at it, what has been provided is pretty specific. Councilmembers, we are at, uh, ten o'clock. Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor?
Uh, I do not require any additional information, and, uh, at this stage, uh, I'd like to call a question.
Um, because you've called the question, we now have to vote on that. I was actually gonna just call for the vote. We now have a council member who has called the question, um, so all the council members must vote, submit your vote if you agree that we are to vote on this item. So this is not a vote on the item, this is a vote to call the question. Councilmembers, if you would please submit your vote. Sylvia, if you would read them back. Um, again, you're voting on call the question, which is ten o'clock, so it is certainly time to call the question.
Uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Ellett, yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please submit your vote. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Sylvia, please read the vote back when you have it.
The motion on the floor to approve the zoning with no access off of Sterns Lane in perpetuity. Uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Ellett, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes.
The motion passes unanimously, which also covers the issue of whether a supermajority is required or not based on the number of input we had. Um, we not only reached supermajority, we had a complete majority. Motion passes. Councilmembers, we do have, um, two additional items, so I will need a motion to table those to the next meeting, and we will then also need a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Rosen Garden, you're unmuted, you just have to unmute yourself.
Motion to table, uh, two agenda items, that is, uh, nine and ten.
Councilmember Medicus, are you our second?
Second.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, please vote aye or nay to table items nine and ten to the next called meeting. Sylvia, if you'd please read the vote once you have it.
Councilmember, uh, Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Ellett, yes.
Councilmember Medicus, Councilmember Rosen Garden, Councilmember Ellett, you all have hot mics. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes.
The motion from Councilmember Medicus is second, from Councilmember Ellett. I have unmuted everyone except for Councilmember Reitz, only because I can't find you. There you go, I can hear you. Um, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
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 Those opposed, they nay, and I still am not convinced that I have Councilmember Reitz audibly. Councilmember Reitz, are you an aye as well?
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned at ten oh-four. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.